It is with great sadness that I have to announce the death of Susan Huron. Susan had worked with the authorities since 1996. She was a business support assistant in the review and inspection unit at Seaford House. Susan was fifty-two years old. Our thoughts are with her family and friends. So would members please join me in a minute's silence as a mark of respect. Do we have any apologies for absence? Thank you.
Um, councillor Dick isn't here.
I was expecting him, so he might turn up, and councillor Pallister's going to be late.
Thank you. Councillor Jackson. If there are any declarations of interest, um, now they declare them now or there's a form going around the room, um, to sign. Um. Would you like to look at the minutes of the previous meeting held on the third of August? Would anyone like to confirm them as a true record?
Yep, can I move the minutes, please, Madam Mayor?
Thank you, would anyone like to second them? Thank you councillor Massey. Um, Mayor's announcements, firstly, I would like to welcome councillor Dowson to the council and congratulate her on a successful election campaign. And would councillor, councillor Dowson like to say anything?
Thank you very much, thank you Madam Mayor, thank you fellow councillors, council officials and members of the public, and especially a big thank you to the people of Mask and St Germain's Ward who came out to vote for me and for all the hard work done from all the members of the Lib Dem party. And I'd just like to say that I hope I make a good councillor for the party. Thank you.
Um, the council's pride award took place a couple of weeks ago. It was a lovely ceremony which highlighted the fantastic staff we have working at the council. I was also delighted to hold two receptions this week. One was to congratulate and thank the community groups who were successful in the recent Northumbria in Bloom awards. We had groups from the areas of Grangetown, Mask, Moesum, Stanghough, and from the primary schools, St Peters in Broton and Westgarth in Mask. They did a tremendous job and I was delighted to thank them for putting something back into their local community. The second reception yesterday was to congratulate the athletes, parents and trainers from our area who attended the Special Olympics National Summer Games in Sheffield. Once again Keith Wilcox and the team did us proud with sixty-two athletes attending from our area and winning medals in a variety of sports. Um, I've just realised, actually, no I haven't sorry, please, are there any announcements from the leader of the council?
Thank you Madam Mayor, just a couple of things for me today. First of all, I just want to remind all members that there is the launch of the South Tees Development Corporation Master Plan next Wednesday here in this room. It's going to be an excellent event, I know we've got two hundred and odd people coming already, really important for the borough, so it'd be great if we can get as many people, councillors there as possible to see that launch. The second thing I just wanted to say was, I'm sure everybody's picked up by now, but the governance working group met earlier this week. You'll be aware that as a result of the boundary review, it has been determined that we should keep fifty-nine councillors for Redcar in Cleveland. The next stage of the process is how we divvy up the wards to make sure that each councillor has equal numbers of households or electors associated with them. The governance group has had a look at that, is starting to do that, we're waiting for some proposals back from officers, but it will again be one of those things that it's really important that everybody is involved in because even if your ward might have the right number of households per councillor now, in sorting out other wards, it has a knock-on effect on everybody, so everybody will need to take an interest in that going forward. Um, in terms of the latest SSI task force statistics, they were circulated at the end of September and they'll be circulated again at the end of October. We are currently waiting for the two-year-on-report to be published, which we're hoping will be available soon. Um, I'd like to add my congratulations to councillor Dawson. It's nice to see you back, because of course it is a return for you, isn't it? And then finally, you didn't mention it Madam Mayor, but I just wanted to say congratulations to all who were involved in the Festival of Thrift. It's an excellent event, fifty-five thou, or fifty thousand plus visitors to the borough, um, national television, radio coverage, hugely important for us and I think very, very successful, so thank you to everybody who was involved in that.
Thank you.
The list is full, you have to register to be able to go to it. Uh, I tried today and it's full, there's a reserve list, you can't go unless you're active in the list.
I can confirm that, yeah, um, I did manage to get a ticket, but we've got a letter saying that it's now full and there's no further places available. Are there any announcements from cabinet members, please? Councillor Halloway?
Thank you Madam. Worker called Louise Walker, um, she graduated in nineteen ninety-two. She's worked in children's services for nineteen years. Uh, after seven years she had her first management post and more recently she's become our principal social worker in February of this year. In this role, she's already undertaken to review the career progression routes for social workers. She's delivered a successful celebration of social work event and she's also begun a programme of radio presentations where social work practitioners raise awareness about their service specialisms. Louise is also a finalist for the National Social Worker of the Year Award, which will take place in London in November. She's nominated in the category of raising the profile of social work, which is obviously hugely important work. Some of the concerns that I had about our Ofsted inspection would not tend to happen if the professional and social status of so, of social workers generally was higher. So I'd just like to congratulate Louise on getting to the final of the awards and wish her luck. I'm sure you'll join with me in wishing her luck at the award ceremony in November.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think we'd all like to wish Louise the best of luck and congratulate her on the achievement of getting so far. Councillor Walsh?
To follow up, first of all with what Craig has said, I think it's absolutely crucial that we raise the profile of social work, not just within the borough, but within the area, and also to promote it as a worthwhile career, which can make a real positive difference to children, families and the elderly, and one that actually makes people's standard of living a better personal standard of living. You can't get much better than that and, you know, I'm sure that she will exemplify that and if we can in fact use her in any kind of events with schools and colleges, I would hope that we can do that. And the second thing is, if I could just say on a personal note, glad to be back. It's been a rather interesting five months for me. It's given me perhaps a new insight on to issues of ageing, social care and our relationships with the NHS. Uh, and I'm pleased to be back and I thank all those members in here who took time out to check after me, to visit me, to pass on greetings, to pass on gossip uh, and to generally make sure that my life wasn't going stir-crazy, looking at four walls in a room in a hospital ward. And I'd like to thank them without naming them, being vicious to do otherwise, but to thank them, they know who they are.
Councillor Brown?
Thank you Madam Mayor. Uh, I'd just like to announce the Coastal Lovett Fund Day at Lock Park on Sunday the twenty-ninth of October. A number of activities will be on during the day, all members are welcome. There'll be free Halloween pa, face paint for the children, circus workshop, uh, the, we'll be having a little pick with some of the community groups, uh, free dog chipping, uh, Cleveland Police there will be there as well, free marking bikes, uh, Halloween fancy dress, smoothie bike, spooky walk and a fire engine as well. Also at the boathouse, we're going to have pumpkin, uh, pumpkin tart and cracker, thanks a lot.
Thank you councillor Brown, um, are there any announcements from chief executive?
Just to follow up on that issue about the launch of the South Tees Master Plan, if any members do want to attend that, if you can just pass your names to me and I'll, I'll see if there are any people that we can, we can stand down to make sure that members can attend. Thank you.
Okay, um, okay, on to questions from the public, for which notice? Sorry councillor Turner.
The business carried over from a previous meeting is moved up the agenda. Um, can I ask why this wasn't done with the question that wasn't answered by councillor Pallister at the last meeting, please?
Um, I did check and according to the, the rules, I believe, um, the questions are, your question would be first on the questions, which was agreed by members, would be last on the thing. So I, I did query that myself with regards to, um, the, the way it's written within the agreement by all members, I believe. So I have done it, but I, I did check on your behalf, because I actually thought it was a bit unfair myself. But maybe it's something that can be looked at in next time the governance review, so. Right, questions from member of the public, which notice has been given? Um, question one, Carla Keagans from Redcar, Carla here?
Thank you, apologies, I've got a cold. Uh, my name's Carla Keagans and I live in Redcar. Um, I'm here on behalf of the many homeless people that I work with every day in this borough and to ask this question of the authority. Um, it was for the, the cabinet member, um, but can the local authority, uh, please confirm that this authority has only accepted one priority need group of homeless people since two thousand and nine? And please give an answer as to why this is or is not the case.
Uh, councillor Jeffries is answering.
Okay, thanks, thanks very much for that question, it's very much appreciated. Um, I have got a sheet here with the details on, which I'm going to hand out afterwards so that everybody's got, um, the full details of the number of homeless cases that we've dealt with between April two thousand and mi, nine and March two thousand and seventeen. And I'll obviously let you have a copy of that as well, Carla. Um, the figures are that Redcar in Cleveland took four hundred and fifty-six homeless applications and following investigations, accepted a homeless duty to a hundred and forty-five households after meeting the required criteria. And then there is a whole list of criteria that are set out in the P one E return, as it's called, and those criteria have different numbers next to them. Now I can stand here and read them all out, but that's probably a bit doffed, isn't it? So, um, but, but you can be assured that of those hundred and forty-five, every single one of them is allocated to one of the priority criteria. And there's, there's more than one of the priority criteria that are identified, many more than one.
Carla, do you have a supplementary question?
Directly to that or, or another supplementary question?
It has to be directly related to the question that you asked initially, sorry?
Um, on that then, I, I would, I don't think that's a satisfactory answer, sorry. Um, and the reason for that is because you've not given the numbers there of other priority need groups that you say have been accepted in that hundred and forty-five. So there's, um, one main priority need group for homelessness, which is, uh, which has been around since before two thousand and two, which is if you're female with children and/or pregnant. Um, from two thousand and two, the priority need categories changed and it was added in to include people with mental health issues, people with physical disabilities, um, people fleeing, vulnerable fleeing domestic violence, people leaving care, the armed forces, um, also custody. So, um, from the, going through the public data from two thousand and nine, according to Redcar and Cleveland authorities, data that's been submitted through the P one E, I could not find any other group.
So do you only have one minute for a supplementary, so?
Sorry, I could not find any other group
Do you have a question?
Other than the females, children, um, and/or pregnant.
Them all out, but I will read them all out and then I'll go on to explain why they don't show in the P one E, okay? So, in terms of homeless because of an emergency, that was three. Homeless with dependent children, sixty-nine. Homeless and pregnant, six. Homeless and applicant is aged sixteen or seventeen, two. Homeless and applicant formerly in care aged eighteen to twenty-one, three. Homeless and of old age, four. Homeless and has a physical disability, nineteen. Homeless and has mental health problem or a learning difficulty, fourteen. Homeless due to drug dependency, zero. Homeless due to alcohol dependency, zero. Homeless due to being a refugee or former asylum seeker, two. Homelessness for another special reason, zero. Homelessness for having been in care, zero. Homelessness, homelessness for having served in Her Majesty's Forces, zero. Homelessness having been in custody or remand, one. And homeless after fleeing home because of violence, threats of violence or threats of violence that are likely to be carried out, twenty-two. That totals the hundred and forty-five that has been accepted as priority homeless since, um, between April two thousand and nine and March two thousand and seventeen. Now the reason they aren't, they aren't show on the P one E, and I did actually look at the P one E today, in fact I've looked at a number of P one Es just to find out how they work. And apparently what happens is if the figure on the quarterly return is less than five, then they put a line in. And the reason they put a line in is because it is possible to identify the applicant by reason of their status and priority need. And what they want to do over above, and over and above everything else is maintain confidentiality. Now, um, you know, it's, it's, it, the, the, the statistics that I've just described are statistics that are publicly available. Um, and, you know, very happy to give you a copy of them, as I say, we've got a copy here for, for every member. And I'm sorry that you haven't had them before this, I would have thought that would have been a fairly straightforward thing to provide to you, so apologies for that. Um, the zero returns, where we, I mean, there are some areas that I questioned, you know, where you're homeless due to a drug dependency or an alcohol dependency. I did question why those were zero returns. And the reason for that is because at the end of the day, the way we categorise them is through by, by using the most pertinent statutory cause. So basically, they, they pick the cause that is, that is the most dominant, I suppose. Um, and you've worked in homelessness departments, I mean, I have in my time as well and, you know, how you categorise things is a, um, um, is obviously important in terms of the returns. But I, I was also just, and there with me very briefly, Madam Mayor, I was, I was concerned though, because I'm assuming you've asked this question because you're concerned about the way we're delivering our homeless service and I'm equally concerned about that, you know, it's, it, these are people who are vulnerable and who deserve our, 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 our best care and attention. And so one of the other things that I did was I actually checked whether the numbers of people that we have homeless and in priority need is similar to those across the Tees Valley authorities. And again, this is publicly available information on the, um, CLG's website. And, um, our number over the last year is thirty-eight in comparison to fourteen in Darlington, forty-seven in Hartlepool, forty-one in Middlesbrough and fifty-seven in Stockton. And all of those are there or thereabouts, with the exception of Darlington, about just under one per thousand households. So we're roughly the same as our neighbours. Now that doesn't mean to say that there isn't always things that we can do better in our homeless section. And you'll know for cer, you know, the same as I do, that there is the Homeless Prevention Act that has come into, um, um, existence just recently and we're currently waiting for the guidance on that and also to know what funding is going to be available for that. And once that's available, and we're working with our colleagues across the Tees Valley authorities to ensure that, um, using that new act, we actually provide the best possible service and we'll continue to do that and we're very happy to continue to work with you and indeed any other interested person in Redcar and Cleveland who wants to help us deliver that best service. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Jeffrey, thank you Carla. Okay, we have three questions from resident Alan Galloway. Um, to remind, you have two minutes to ask your initial question, any supplementary questions, one minute. So question two.
Thank you Madam Mayor. Uh, I stand here to represent the interests of my parents, Lilian and Joseph Galloway, eighty-eight and eighty-nine years old, who have been requested by this council to sit in the public gallery. My mother couldn't attend today because she's too ill, which is generally the case, uh, yet they're constantly, over the past two years, having to put up with antisocial behaviour outside their own home. My first question, in line with the council's duties and responsibilities in law and for the example of using one tool of enforcement of the antisocial behaviour, Canama Policing Act two thousand, tw- two thousand and fourteen, and I give examples there, where is this council's antisocial behaviour assistance and service? No initial letter, given complaint reference number, no contact from antisocial behaviour officers, no advice on what can be done to stop antisocial behaviour being experienced, no follow-up to repeated antisocial behaviour requests made by phone, stated no records of such contact or that are now being online, uh, made, online via the council's reported portal and following, followed up by email using automatically generated contact reference number, no responses basically.
Thank you, councillor Jeffrey or councillor, councillor Jeffrey?
Yep, um, first of all, thanks very much, Mr Galloway, for coming along and asking the questions. Um, you know, I, I'm really sorry, I suppose, that, that we've got to this point, but, um, I hope that the answers I can give you today will, will help you, um, um, deal with the, deal with the problem and take it forward. Um, I don't think we're going to agree, I think, on everything, because the first thing I'm going to say, but I am going to tell you, um, from our perspective, how we think we've dealt with this. Um, I know for a fact that, that both councils, officers from the council's community safety team and other teams, such as the neighbourhoods team, have actually been discussing this matter and trying to resolve it with you for some time now. And we've actually spent many hours in contact with you, providing advice, trying to work with you and trying to find ways to resolve what we all accept are really difficult problems. They aren't things that any of us would want to live with. The fact is though, and we all know this, dealing with complaints of antisocial behaviour, there's often differing views about what behaviour is acceptable and what isn't. And as a council, we're presented with all sorts of cases all the time and we try very hard to take a balanced approach so that we can behave reasonably to the whole community. I know that in your particular case, um, we've tried to agree some actions to try and take this forward and to, and we've kept in regular touch with you. Um, we've even appointed a dedicated single point of contact within the community safety team to deal with your requests. Um, your question suggests that we haven't acted on your complaint, but all the evidence I've seen is that we actually have and that we've put significant amounts of time into trying to resolve it. Um, and I'm, I'm just sorry that that doesn't seem to have worked for you, but we have certainly put time into it and tried to resolve it and I, you know, that, that, that is where we are on this one.
Do you have a supplementary on that question?
Well, I don't agree with what councillor Jeffrey says, obviously, um, in that respect. There is the amount of correspondence that we have exchanged with the council, but what we've, we've, we've got a situation where we actually, I'm actually issuing evidence of what's going on and it's not being responded to. That's, that's, that's recent evidence where we come into a serious confrontation and it's not being responded to. And a supplementary question, you know, as I say, leads on from that as the example of what's been, I appreciate the correspondence, but it's not, there's no discussion with the antisocial behaviour officer, nobody ever contacted me. And apparently the guy that has been speaking with me, and I won't name him, is not an antisocial behaviour officer, so I don't know what's been going on with the council. All I know is the stack of evidence that the council has got here has never been taken into account and are not applying the law as it stands in the antisocial behaviour Canama Policing Act two thousand and fourteen. If that's implemented, then this situation does not exist for my parents and does not exist for other members of the public. So I, I can only repeat again councillor Jeffries, can the leader of this council assure me that she is not aware of the clear feelings in the, in our case, the refusal of officers to apply the law and that she will now direct the executive and their officers to the correct matters, to correct matters for the sake of our elderly parents and my concerns for the elderly public in general? Because this is not an acceptable reproach to antisocial behaviour. Whatever you define as antisocial behaviour, constant nuisance is antisocial.
Thank you, sorry, um, it's one minute for a supplementary, have you got any response to that councillor Jeffrey?
I, I can only sort of repeat what I've said, I mean, obviously if you have additional evidence that we haven't responded to, I'm sure we will. I mean, obviously, if you have additional evidence that we haven't responded to, I'm sure we will respond to that. But I have in front of me a letter dated the eighth of March two thousand and seventeen, which is headed the outcome of stage two informal meeting. And it talks about a whole range of things that we have suggested to you that we might be able to help with. Shrub bread and tubs being realigned, pavement and grass areas, dealing with those. I'm, I'm, I'm not going to read them all because I'm sure you've seen this letter, but that isn't, isn't the evidence to me of a case that hasn't been dealt with. That's, that's evidence to me of a case where officers are working very hard to try and find a resolution.
Would you like to move on to your next question, Mr Galloway?
Madam Mayor. As this council is directing the public to contact Cleveland Police outside of nine to five office hours to report antisocial behaviour noted on the council's website, thereby clearly needing effective interaction between both authorities, why do Cleveland Police then direct the public to Redcar and Cleveland Pow- Cleveland Council over certain issues, football kickabout and misuse of the highway, for example, once reported? And I give the example there of the situation with the football on the highway, which is adjacent to my parents' home. I advise to contact Cleveland Police by the council, who can enforce section one six one of the highways act nineteen nineteen in respect of football being played on the highway and directed back to Redcar and Cleveland Borough Council to enforce the requirements of the highways act nineteen ninety. And likewise, asked by Redcar and Cleveland Borough Council for date, records of antisocial behaviour reported to Cleveland Police. Clearly, they should both have access to the same information when Redcar and Cleveland Borough Council are directing the public to Cleveland Police. Elderly and vulnerable people cannot deal with this.
Thank you, Mr Galloway, councillor Jeffrey?
Yeah, obviously, you understand I can't speak, I can't speak on behalf of the police. But from our perspective, we do work in very close partnership with Cleveland Police. And we do that over tackling crime and antisocial behaviour. And the body that we do that through is something called the Community Safety Partnership. And the Community Safety Partnership has sitting underneath it a number of operational partnerships that deals, deal with local level incidents. That working together enables us to use the tools and powers that we have available to us under the antisocial behaviour crime and policing act. And we encourage residents to report antisocial behaviour through a range of channels, including the one oh one phone number. We do share information and liaise with the police when we can, and I know that this has been the case with the issues you have raised. And there have been a number of multi-agency meetings, so that's all the parties getting together round the table to discuss an appropriate way forward. However, if we're going to use our enforcement powers, or indeed if the police are going to use their enforcement powers, and I can't speak on behalf of them, as I said, we've got to have evidence. And we do ask residents to record information, which will help us tackle the issue. And we use, ask people to use diary sheets to do that. These are a really important step in the process. And I know it has been offered to you to help us collect that evidence, but I, I don't think you have, you have completed those diary sheets. And that makes it a little bit more difficult for us. I do acknowledge that there can sometimes be an issue in determining the distinction between antisocial behaviour and criminal activity. I don't always know what the difference of that is. But, and, and, and I also know that there is sometimes clashes between organisations about who should be responsible for enforcing a particular offence. In relation to the highways act nineteen eighty and the playing of football, I mean, I, we, we will do more to see if we can seek some further clarity on that. But it seems to be one of these ones where both ourselves and the police could have an interest. But we, we will do more to try and find out some clarity on that.
Do you have a supplementary on question two, please, on your second question?
Supplementary question, thank, thank you, Madam Mayor. As I say, yet again, I don't agree, I agree with what you say, councillor Jeffrey, because the inf, the evidence, if, if I could sit down there and somebody was to evaluate what evidence I've now compiled. But the Cleveland Police refusing to do that, Cleveland Police only deal with one incident reporter, you phone them up, job done, once, once that incident is closed. They're not looking at the full picture, they won't accept the photographic evidence that I've now compiled, which shows an horrendous situation that my parents personally have had to put up with. So again, I can only say, can the leader of the council assure me that she is not aware of that members of the public are being redirected both authorities and ask for duplicate information provided when this council is portraying the combined service on, on, on the website? That is clearly not interacting and to the benefit of the public. And what matters now to be corrected or that this council will itself take a lead and itself provide information to Cleveland Police rather than the public having to do that. So, you know, it's, the, the interaction's certainly not there until such a time as I've initiated a community trigger. And on the basis of me not filling that form in after all the amounts of information I've given, this council would stop this process there and then.
Thank you, Mr Galloway. Got any response to that, councillor?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we would want to stop the process. I think we'd want to try and find a solution to a problem and that's what we would always want to do. I think in relation to the way that we exchange information with the police, as I say, we do that through the Community Safety Partnership and the operational partnerships that slip below the, the, the large Community Safety Partnership. My understanding from the information that I've been given, as I say, there has been a number of multi-agency meetings. That means all the partners have been sat round the table to talk about the issues that you raise. And that's our normal way of trying to do, deal with these sorts of things because they are very, very difficult. So, I mean, I would have thought all the information that should have been has been exchanged between the two parties. But again, if you have more information that you feel we haven't considered, then obviously we will look at that.
Thank you, councillor Jeffrey. On to your final question, Mr Galloway, two minutes for the question, one minute for any supplementary relating directly to the original question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Prompt action is clearly required to antisocial behaviour where resulting damage is taking place to well maintained and cared for environments such as that which existed at Rothwell Muse, only to be progressively damaged by extensive kickabout, football practice and deliberate damage in such a short space of time. Why is this council itself not investigating complaints even when anonymous and promptly using tools available in the antisocial behaviour carma policing act two thousand and fourteen, for example, to cause an immediate stop for such damage and clear nuisance? I refer to petition PO one six zero six, which was dealt with in denial of the facts by two local councillors and subsequent final report by councillor Alec Brown. There is clear evidence of the extent of football taking place at Rothwell Muse from the gull mouth effect on the grass, yet simply attributed to the amount of pedestrian traffic here and there, along with the willful deliberate damage caused. This council is clearly sending out the wrong message in respect of such attitudes and condone, that condones certain activities and resulting damage. Where is the education of these people instead of your loving it scheme, which simply puts the onus on to the rest of us to put things right? The destruction of the environment and the damage caused.
Mr Galloway, councillor Jeffrey?
Thank you. I mean, as a council, we try extremely hard to ensure that we have safe neighbourhoods in which our residents can live. And the love it scheme, which you talk about putting the onus on the rest of us, it's not about putting the onus on others. It's about us working together as a community to try and deliver the best possible communities that we can. And that scheme, you know, is a really important one because it's about raising awareness of antisocial behaviour and the impacts of it and indeed all the other stuff that goes on, not only with residents but also with children in the schools, where anywhere we can to get the interest and make sure that people can take responsibility and work with us to deliver the best possible environments. But at the end of the day, there has to be a degree of tolerance about the general use of open spaces. And there will be wear and tear on grass areas. And I know that your ward councillors and council officers have tried to work with you and agree mediation actions. And they were listed in councillor, in the letter provided by Cabinet Member councillor Brown. There has also been a letter sent to all residents, as well as, as I've already said, a potential redesign of shrubbery and landscape along with the engagement with children playing in the area. We have something called the streets service that goes out and works with young people, actually out on the streets to try and get them into other, other activities. And, but as you say, you, you, you weren't satisfied with the proposals that were set out in this letter, which, which is unfortunate because I think there's a lot good stuff in here that we could work together to deliver on. As I said right at the outset, there are different perceptions about behaviour and what is acces-, is acceptable. We must find a reasonably balanced solution which caters for the whole community where possible. And based on the current evidence, the council do not feel that there is any basis for formal enforcement action, and I think you know that. But I understand that you've revoked the ASB community, you've invoked the ASB community trigger, the antisocial behaviour community trigger, which you're absolutely entitled to do. And we've had an initial meeting, which was completed on the twenty eighth of September, and that formal process is now underway. So that, that is happening, as I understand it.
Do you have a supplementary question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think there's quite a considerable lack of feedback from what you're actually saying, councillor Jeffries. Going back to the two previous questions also, because there's certainly not coming my way as to what's being put in place by this multi-agency approach. Unless the multi-agency process is now in place now, it's certainly not been the feedback to me. That's been communications with officers, but not from a multi-agency approach. I refer again to petition PO one oh six, which was dealt with in denial on fact of evidence, clear evidence at Rothwell Muse and the photographic evidence, sending out the wrong message, that condones nuisance, I've had on this wrong, sorry. I say again, can the leader of the council assure me that systems will be implemented for reports of damage to public open spaces to be made by council operatives, that, and that a lead will be taken to stop such destruction to eliminate the need of the public to complain and have to resort to petitions process? So, as I say, I, I don't agree with the actual response that you've given in the previous thing. It's the multi-agency approach certainly isn't being fed back to me. And we still have this considerable nuisance at one property. And I don't believe that there's anyone in this chamber would, would actually tolerate. And it's not a matter of tolerance, a nuisance is a nuisance in law and it's quite clear nuisance what's been subjected to by my parents.
Councillor Jeffrey, any response?
I, I think, I think it's really quite difficult for us to say anymore because there's obviously, you know, we have a different view of what's being done here. I mean, we do have, as I've said already, you have invoked the community trigger, the antisocial behaviour community trigger. And hopefully that will allow for the discussion of the issues that you've raised further. Okay.
Thank you, councillor, thank you councillor Jeffrey, thank you, Mr Galloway. Okay, we're going to consider reports from Cabinet and council committees. Member May speak for ten minutes, seconda for five. And the first one is the new vision, values and corporate plan, councillor Sue Jeffrey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I've got a change, you know, I'm a, a, a different perspective. And, and I do have to say, you know, to, to the gentleman, Mr Roth-, Mr, Mr Galloway, you know, antisocial behaviour is a hugely difficult issue to deal with. And I think we all know that in all of our wards and have every sympathy with him. And, you know, it's things like the corporate plan, although they seem like cold documents and that won't actually do anything. It's that that sets the tone and enables us to have a framework within which we can act to tackle some of those behaviours. And that's why I think this document is, is so important. So, so just, just a couple of things in introducing this report. Since I became leader of the council two and a half years ago, we've actually had to deal with some really big issues that affect the lives of everyone who lives here in Redcar in Cleveland. The biggest we refer to at every single council meeting, the closure of SSI. But there's others as well that we all know about, cuts in services, cuts in welfare, increasing numbers of children living in poverty. And despite an increase in overall employment, significant drop in average wages. And most recently, at the Health and Wellbeing Board, a decrease in life expectancy, the first, the first time in a decade, if you can believe that, an actual decrease in life expectancy. But in saying that, we've had some good things as well. Our primary schools are some of the best in the country, we work much more closely with our communities, Saltburn is one of the top twenty five places to live. Our beach at Redcar is recognised as a best day out destination and our programme of events and activities get nationally claimed. And those are just the ones I can think of, I'm sure all of you can think of many more things. Now, in terms of the corporate plan, what this has got to do with the corporate plan? Well, the plan is about setting out our vision for our borough. We know what we've been through, we know some of the good stuff that goes on already. And with this document, we can actually tell our citizens, our staff, our businesses, our visitors about what we want to come and how we want our borough to be shaped. But it's not just about what we do here in the council, it's also about what happens out there in our communities and how we can work in partnership to deliver a great place for all our people. So what does the report consist of? Well, I'm sure every of you, all of you have had a chance to look at it, look at it. We've revisited the council's vision and values, they were last agreed about eight years ago. And the fact is, we're in a very different place to when, what we were then. So we've involved almost two hundred people from across our teams in the work, many of whom are also residents of this borough. And people have reflected on their ambitions for the area and values that are important to them and what they're proud of. And they've also looked at what needs to be done going forward. And the result is a vision that sets out our long term ambition and goals, but also reflects where we've come from, where we get our strength and resilience as a community, our past and our place. And our new vision, and I'm sure you all know it now, is a flourishing future forged from a proud past. And then sitting beside that vision are the values that describe our culture and our behaviour. So the first one of those is our priority to work with our partners and our people, keeping communities at our heart. Our second is about our willingness to take risks, to do new things and to give everything a go, even if it isn't the easiest path to take. That's being bold and ambitious. The third is about how we treat people and their views and ideas, being caring and respectful and listening and hearing what people are saying to us and acting on that where we can. And finally, ensuring that we constantly try to provide the highest quality so we are delivering our best. The report then sets out our nine priorities that will take us to twenty twenty and beyond. And I have to say that these are not partisan, they're not party political, they're broad based ambitions to secure the very best for our people. They reflect the challenges that we all recognise are important and include commitments that we aim to deliver. The how we're going to do it will follow in the delivery plan, which will be underpinned by each of the directorate's service plans. And finally, at the end of the document, there's twenty key indicators that'll measure how we're doing and the promise to provide, of course, regular reports on progress. There's been a lot of debate by members regarding the content of the plan and many of the comments have been reflected in the document that you now have. And I hope some of you can see the changes that you asked for. I hope on this basis that we'll be able to back the ambition for our borough that it sets out and unanimously approve the plan today. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Jeffrey, do you have a seconda for that motion?
I part, Madam Mayor, reserve the right to speak.
Thank you. Councillor Kay?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to comment on the appendix one, which is the plan itself. I wonder sometimes, you know, whether all the effort that's gone into this is really worthwhile. We're supposed to do most of these things already and to, all we're doing is sort of rewriting the story. However, having said that, since we're obvi-, obviously going to have this document and it, it may have some minimal effect on what we do in the future, I would like to suggest or to move some amendments to it. I have brought up some of these, by the way, various, I can't remember, several meetings I've been to earlier. And I was rather disappointed that certainly two of them had not been implemented when the document was changed for the final, oh no, I hope it's not the final, but the draft plan we've got in front of us. First of all, I would like to move that we change the heading of the whole document. Instead of our flourishing future, Madam Mayor, I believe it should be towards, towards a flourishing future. This word our, it's, you want to do something new. We've had our, our, our for the last fifteen years. Let's talk in simple English that I want the people out there know. So it would be towards a flourishing future. Here we're talking about the road, in my opinion, not the destination. Um, I, I, here we're talking about the road, in my opinion, not the destination, we're, we're talking about the way to get to something better, not, uh, you know, guaranteeing to our people that we're going to get there. You know, i- if you're not honest with people in Redcar and Cleveland, they'll just laugh you out of court. You know, we, 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 it's a long time since this area has been flourishing. Our people know that it'll be a long time before we flourish again. This isn't the fault of this council necessarily, I think on the whole we're quite a good and democratic council, but it, it, it's mainly economic factors which, which have caused the problem. So we shouldn't, let's not overpromise, let's try to be more realistic. So that would be my first change. Then turning to page twenty-three, I've brought this up several times, I thought we pay hundreds of thousands to a communications department, who, who are, and I sometimes feel like I do the job better myself, to be quite frank. Nine priorities, uh, about, I don't know how long Amanda's been our chief executive, but it's, it's certainly she was chief executive. I was chairman of a, a subgroup which was looking at, uh, communications within the council and customer service, and, uh, Amanda, uh, pointed out that she'd been on holiday and she'd seen a particular organisation, uh, pointing to ten priorities. And we jumped onto this with our grace, and we adopted some of the priorities for this authority, and probably eight years later, they're still in force to do with the principles of customer service. We've got the Ten Commandments, we've got the Top Ten, let's have a magic number, not nine, how pathetic can you get? You, all you've got to do, and I suggest this is done, that we sep- separate clean and safe environment into two, whereby you have, number seven would be a clean environment, number eight would be a safe environment, bringing the magic number ten. Then you can sell it to the people, if you want to sell this thing, which they're not going to be very interested in in any case, you've got to make it sexy. Now, my third amendment would be this, next pa- uh, I'm not, the page numbering isn't very good, but it's, it's the one with the, the, if you turn over, it's got Skinning Grove Beach, where incidentally, nobody on the picture comes from Skinning Grove, but that isn't what I'm amending. Um, this final s- promise on that page, we will welcome new people to live in Redcar in Cleveland. I don't know what that means, does it mean we stand on the beach and, and hug them as they arrive? Does it mean, does it mean that may be part of it? Or does it mean that once they have arrived, we treat them with respect, dignity and equality? It do, it's not, it's not clear what it means. So I think that should be, that one should be amended. And we should, we should say, we shall encourage people with education, qualifications, money to spend, and with potential, which would cover young people of course, to live in Redcar in Cleveland. We, we, we shall give equal respect to all who live in our borough. So it should be, we shall encourage people with education, qualifications, money to spend and potential to live in Redcar in Cleveland, we shall give equal respect to all who live in our borough. And of course, we want people to come into this co- this, I said, country, um, borough, people who can contribute to society and make the place a flourishing borough, not just welcoming everybody without any consideration to whether they're going to improve our lives and their own lives in this place. Once, uh, wh- what I do object to, uh, is that once people do arrive, certain people say, oh, we've lived here forever and therefore we've got more rights than you, that is totally wrong. Once their people do arrive here, they should be, uh, respected and given the same opportunities and treated equally with everybody else. And in fact, this is supposed, I think, to be a socialist Labour Party document, and yet as councillor Nightingale pointed out twice, I think, the word equality, which is the focus of socialism, is not me- until now, unless you accept my amendment, it's not mentioned anywhere.
Thank you, councillor Kay. Um, can I just check, are you formally proposing an amendment? And if so, do you have a seconda? Sorry? All right, so we need clarification.
Uh, i- i- if, if, uh, you want to support one of my amendments and, and another, then, you know, I might come say, it depends what you've got to say. But I have moved it as one amendment.
And do you have, do we have a seconda for that amendment? So we remain with, I believe we remain with the original motion? Yes? Okay, thank you. Councillor Hunt, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I'll be brief, I was going to say a lot more, but, uh, I'd just like to come to the point of communities. You know, it's mentioned a lot in there about communities, and, and as councillor Kay said, there's, uh, there is one person who lives in Skinning Grove on the photograph, you know, and, and when you're talking about communities up in Carlinghough, we have people who litter pick every Sunday morning called chaps, and they've been doing that for three years now, in the snow and the rain, everything, that's a community. But the point of communities I'd like to mention is, uh, and again, I'm only looking at my ward, you all have your wards, you all have the same problems as myself, and I would like to thank, uh, councillor Pallister for pulling towards, trying to solve one of these problems, uh, just put a lot of work in, and I think we'll be moving forward. But the communities, say, like Carlinghough, there's three or four streets, it's all terraced that the, where the problems really are, and the same in the Brickyard in, in Brock. And, um, we talk about communi- communities, there's people who have lived there all their lives, wanting to move out of these very small communities, you know, they're not like a, a great big place, you, you're talking about a very small community, rural, they can't sell their houses because of, uh, the antisocial behaviour and the people coming in. And, um, why should people, we're talking about communities and doing the better for them, that we're nowhere near solving any problems? I want to see this work, I'm not having a go at the thing, I'd, I'd love to see it work, but we've got to be realistic, and there's a lot of things happening that we had to, we've got forty-two we-wills in here, I hope we can do them. But my priority to me is my ward, and even, um, what the gentleman was talking about, children, in the last two weeks, there's been thirty to fifty kids in Brock, kicking cars in, drinking, where's the police? There isn't any. We have two police, we used to have two police from Saltburn to Stades, we have two police now from Nunthorpe to Stades. You know, they came the other night to the kids, drove in, they dispersed, they went, and that was it, they were back, all drinking again, and it's the, these people that we call communities that are sick of it, and we're not doing enough to do it. So I'd just like to say, I hope we can deliver on what we're saying, but at this moment in time, I don't think we are. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Hunt, uh, councillor Ian Jeffries, please.
Yeah. Well, just on that latter point, Chair, if the worst any kids did in my ward was kick a football about, I'd gladly welcome those problems. Um, I was going to get up and say the council would be advised to throw out, uh, councillor Kay's amendments, but he managed to do that without any assistance from me whatsoever. So that comes almost academic now, uh, but what I would say is that he has to be the chair of the Children's Services Scrutiny and Improvement Committee, which from time to time he doesn't, uh, chair too badly at all, I've got to say, and even asks some sensible questions. But when this subject arose at the last committee, uh, he didn't say anything at all about the issues he's just raised. Uh, a question I suppose of looking for a bigger audience, councillor Kay.
Councillor Eyre, please.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor. Uh, councillor Kay talks about in his amendment, uh, he wants to welcome people into Redcar Cleveland Borough Council, we want people who can contribute and add value to the bro- uh, to the borough. But I asked a question to councillor Steve, uh, Steve Kay, what about people who, through not their own fault, but they are upstanding people, they want to come into, live into Redcar Cleveland, but through no fault of their own, cannot meet the criteria that councillor Kay puts down? Thank you.
Thank, um, I, I think it's off point, really, it's...
Specifically said that young people in particular who have potential should be welcomed, and young people by their very nature have potential, that they should be welcomed into the borough.
I think, I think we're going off, off the point of the corporate plan here, so we'll move on. Uh, uh, it's not a-
What about those who don't have the potential, who throw no fault of their own?
It's not a, it's not a question and answer session with councillor Kay, so, um, we'll move on to councillor Higgins, please.
Um, I would just like to say you understand what councillor Kay's saying in a way, because we've had our plan shaping our future, and now we've got our again, but I suppose that's a play on words and that. Um, what I would like to say is, and I'm just, would like to agree with councillor Hunt, um, what we've got down here, it's not rocket science really, it's what we should be doing as a council anyway, um, regarding the communities and that, communities and voluntary sector have worked very hard in this borough for many, many years without any real recognition through time from this council, and they are the backbone not of this council, but of this country. If we worked out how much revenue they actually contributed to the council, it would be absolutely phenom- phenomenal. Um, on the heritage, I can remember many years ago coming to this council and asking that we should promote our heritage, but it was poo-pooed and pushed to one side. What we're doing now is we're playing catch-up, and we've got to catch up very quickly, and what we haven't got to forget is the voluntary sector and our communities and all the hard work that they do, and we should now be input, they are our major partners in this council, our communities and the voluntary sector, and we should be doing more work to support them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Higgins. Councillor Glynn Nightingale.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, I wasn't going to speak, but, um, councillor Kay mentioned me, so I think I'd better explain what it was all about that I mentioned at the cabinet. Uh, just want to say four things, Madam Mayor. Uh, first of all, I've got some sympathy with the point about our, but it's just about semantics, isn't it, in the end? Um, and in principle, we should have a plan, uh, and this is a very nice and homely plan that I think we can support. Uh, secondly, um, I, I did make some comments about the, um, the values that are down here that I don't really think in the main are values, and I think we should be putting our back into achieving greater equality in the area and as, and encouraging aspiration as major values. And there are aspects of this plan that do achieve that, but they're not actually spelled out. Um, so, the third point I want to make is that, um, the fundamental issue here is how we're actually going to achieve what we're trying to aspire to in this document, and I think it's, uh, important that in the next few months, that the members of the council are given considerable detail on the how of this particular document. And the fourth point I want to make is, uh, I think we should stop talking and get on with, uh, doing something that, uh, will make this area a better place for people to live in.
Thank you, councillor Nightingale. Councillor Lanigan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I just want to reiterate what the other councillors said, and it's about communities. I know on the, on the front page, you've got our Klondike on there, this is run by volunteers, this isn't Redcar Cleveland's council, it's run by the delegates of eleven villages, um, who don't get paid, and I wear a second hat in there because I'm the chair of that at the moment. We actually brought in five point three million people over the Klondike, who'd watched it, listened to it, and the next year is going to be even better because they're coming from all over Europe. We are working alongside Gisborough Town Council because we are running the Klondike out of there, but this is voluntary, this is lottery money that came in, and, uh, I was pleased to see that you'd got that on the Redcar Cleveland things. I would appreciate it though, that if you do it again, if you can put our logo on it to say that it is, um, East Cleveland villages and it's not Redcar Cleveland Council. And while we're talking about communities, we've got to make sure that the region within East Cleveland is looked after, and I'm sure that you're all aware, and I know that we've got a financial report coming in at the moment, um, that I've asked for extra money for this area in particular. And, uh, I was very grateful that your cabinet member came down to have a look, to see exactly what sort of state we were in there, and we need some help down there, and the only way we're going to get that is to put some financial money in there. We've got the plans ready, we've got everything in place, and we are not going to move forward without some financial aid. And I know that some of the councils here are going to say, well, we haven't got any money. But in order to stimulate a community, it has to have financial backing in there, and I'm hoping that when this comes forward for your financial and our budget, because I've already drawn up, um, enough so that you, the cabinet, can have a look at this, um, to see if we can take this forward. And the people of East Cleveland are expectant that this council and the councils within this chamber will support anything that's going on within the communities because it's very much needed. We've got serious issues in Loftus at the moment, that the chief executive and I'm sure that the cabinets are aware of, there is a meeting next week with the police over the, some of these issues going on there, and they have to be addressed. And we, uh, as one of the councillors said, I don't know who it was, we don't have any police, and it's becoming absolutely ridiculous. And the resources that we're using from Redcar Cleveland Council to address this at the moment is more than stretched, to the point where I've now been given a sharp spin and gloves to go around and collect these needles rather than getting our staff out from Dormanstown, and this has got to stop, and we need to unite the communities together, and we haven't at the moment. Um, and I've looked at that plan, and that's wonderful if it works, and this council has to be held to account across the board. It isn't just the, the ruling group that we've got at the moment, it's about all councils pulling together to make sure that we can address the serious issues that we've got, and serious issues we do have. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Lanigan. Would you like to sum up couns- oh, sorry, councillor Mason.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Do my ears deceive me, or did councillor Lanigan just suggest that five point three million people came to see the Klondike cycle race?
We'd got from the BBC and from, um, uh, the, the bike organisations, it hit five point three million. There wasn't five point three million in Gisborough and around the area, but there was tens of thousands of people if you'd come out to have a look.
Uh, I see. Um, yes, anyway, on to the plan, sorry about my voice, I'm, um, I'm doing my celebrated impersonation of Theresa May, uh, today. Um, sorry, I've got some cough sweets, thank you, yes, I've got them. Not today, thanks, Ian. Um, I beg your pardon? Um, charming. Um, the corporate plan, yes, I'm absolutely happy to support this. It's not our plan, it is your plan, but nonetheless, it is a plan that we are happy to sign up to on this occasion. Um, I am going to be voting for it, the Liberal Democrats will be supporting it, however, we will also be reserving the right to criticise it. However, we will also be reserving the right to criticise it in the future, should that become necessary. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you, councillor Mason. Would you like to sum up councillor Jeffrey?
Yes, thank you very much, madam mayor. And can I thank everybody for their comments and their input? I mean, I think, you know, there is quite rightly a degree of scepticism, isn't there, about any document that looks like this, that tries to set out a vision and a plan for the future? And, but I think it's absolutely right that we set that ambition for ourselves, that we set something to aim for. If we set something that's back down here somewhere, then we're actually not going to be raising our sights either, are we? Doing the best we can, and that's what this is about, and that's why that value, which is about bold and ambitious, is exactly central to this plan. It's about being bold and ambitious, and it's about setting out where we want to be. In terms of, you know, does it include everything? Probably it doesn't include everything, probably there is stuff that will need to be included within the delivery plans, you wouldn't expect anything else, that's fine. Does it talk about inequality? Yes, it does talk, it doesn't talk about equality, but it does talk about inequality. And as I've already said, it does talk about bold and ambitious. It talks all the time about communities because fundamentally, we will not do this alone. The photographs aren't of us, the people included we're talking about isn't us. It's not the council, it is Redcar and Cleveland, our communities working together. And it's our responsibility as a councillor, as well as providing services, to facilitate that engagement and involvement of those people. That's what we do. And that's why we, the way we make ourselves the best possible borough that we can be. And that's what we've got to do going forward. So I make no apologies at all for featuring pictures of people in here and things that have happened that go on all the time. I'm really proud to show them and to show them off, and I think that's really, really good. In terms of volunteers, as I've said, you know, yes, of course, we need to acknowledge and take account of the needs of volunteers. There's a question on that later on, so I'm sure councillor Massey will talk about it a bit more. But the fact is, you know, this is about a bold, ambitious plan, which says over the next three years, we want to see Redcar and Cleveland continue to grow, thrive and prosper. And I'm really grateful that everybody, the majority of you anyway, seem to share that ambition because I think it's the right ambition that we should have as a council. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Jeffrey. Can I have a show of hands for everyone in favour of supporting the corporate plan? All those against? Two. Thank you, that's carried. And could we have councillor Hanaway to report on looked after children and child sexual exploitation?
Thank you, madam mayor. So this is our regular report about our looked after children and our strategies to prevent child sexual exploitation. And I'm sure you've already been told, councillor Dowson, that along with the rest of us, you are a corporate parent for these children. I've got to do the numbers at the end this time. So in our fostering panel, we have approved another family for fostering. We're assessing seven households to be foster carers and eight family and friends carers. And we're also training another five prospective fostering households. That's a good number of people coming through the system. We continue to raise awareness about our recruitment campaign. It's always a delight to see the fostering team come to the farmers' market, and they also went to the Festival of Thrift. We've had a foster carer on BBC Radio Tees, and also a foster carer of 35 years of fostering has written an article in the council magazine. We're also pleased to have a common framework with the Tees Valley for the commissioning of the independent fostering agencies. And there is great advantages in having that. With adoption, it's National Adoption Week next week, and the theme this time is sibling groups. Sibling groups are always harder to find adopters for. And of course, it is a very sad thing when sibling groups are separated and put up for adoption because that's the only realistic chance they will have of becoming adopted. So we're highlighting sibling groups on this particular week. Also, we have an increasing number of children coming through for adoption at the moment. And this hasn't happened for a while, so that's very positive. On the other side of it, I'd recommend that you have a listen to a BBC Radio 4 programme, a Fylon 4 programme called Adoption Families in Crisis, which highlights the number of adoption placements which break down and the consequences for the people involved and for the children. And I definitely recommend that anybody who's interested have a listen to that. Moving on, we have a social worker vacancy in the Looked After Children's T that needs to be filled, and we haven't managed to fill it in the recent round. Obviously, it's the recruitment of experienced foster, not foster carers, social workers which is very difficult. It's not so difficult to recruit newly qualified people, but the first three years of experience is absolutely crucial. Here's a success, we have three young people who have recently returned home to the care of their parents following successful assessments, and we wish them good fortune with that because that's obviously the ideal outcome in child protection. And the rest of that page is about achievements and rewards for our Looked After Children. With our care leaving service, I'd like to draw your attention to the Teenagers to Work initiative that's being done in partnership with Foundation for Jobs in which 12 care leavers recently accessed this opportunity for work experience places in a variety of placements across the Tees Valley. We're also pleased to report that several young people have started college courses, some returning to university, and that all of our unaccompanied asylum-seeking children are currently at college studying English as speakers of other languages. Moving on to the CSE section of the report, I've talked before about the importance of taxi drivers gaining licences, the requirement for them to pass a CSE awareness test before they get their licence. And there are currently over 300 taxi drivers who've completed that test. It's very important because, as we know, vulnerable young people almost always make their way towards the night time economy. So the more people we have in the night time economy that have that awareness, the better. Also, in order to raise awareness about CSE, we've been doing sessions at freshers' fairs in Redcar and Cleveland College and in Prior Perskell College. The second highest numbers in terms of age group for CSE is the 16 to 17 year olds. Sadly, the highest number is for 14, 15 year olds. So those sessions have attracted around 600 students between the two venues. And also, our VENT subgroup, that's vulnerable exploited, missing and trafficked subgroup in the safeguarding board are currently carrying out an audit to provide assurance that children are being safeguarded, that their voices are being heard, and that information is being successfully shared across partner agencies. That is often no simple task, the sharing of information, but it's hugely important. So finally, to return to the numbers, we have currently, or had at the end of August, 258 Looked After Children. Now, this is, obviously, this is the highest number that we've ever had. And it represents, it's an extremely high number for us. I've been looking back through the figures, 2012 to 2017. Over the past five years, we've had a 32% increase in children with child protection plans, a 52% increase of Looked After Children, and of those children, 50% were in out of borough placements. So because of this increase, it means that children, the children's services spending will be approximately two and a half million over budget by the end of this financial year, which obviously is a considerable pressure on our budget. And of course, that assumes that the level of Looked After Children doesn't continue to rise. We don't know if it will, the numbers in Middlesbrough have started levelling off a little bit. That may happen here, it may not. But currently, it's a two and a half million overspend. Now, I've discussed this with the director, we've also discussed it with the corporate resources director who has a plan, and with my limited financial knowledge, I'm convinced that that plan for the budget will be successful. Of course, next year is a whole other story, and I suspect that next year is when we will really see whether this massive reduction in funds, combined with this massive increase in demand, can work along with all the other things that we do as a council. To put it into context, 75% of local authorities overspent last year in children's services, a total of 605 million. And to put that into a wider context, there are currently 11.8 million children in England, four million of them are living in poverty. There's a £2 billion gap, a funding gap in children's services. For every one pound spent on preventative help, four pounds is spent on reactive child protection work. In the last six years, there's been a funding reduction in England of 40%. The children in care have gone up 10%, and the children subject to a child protection plan have gone up 29%. One in 10 children in England has a diagnosable mental health condition. 600 youth centres have closed, and 1,200 children centres have closed. Clearly, these figures are from a report by the Association of Directors of Children's Services. The report is called Is This a Country That Works for All Children? And clearly, at the moment, from those figures, and from our own local experience, the answer is no. And we need a governmental plan to do something about this before it turns into a massive social disaster. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hanaway. Do you have a second for that report? Thank you. Councillor Ovens, please.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Good report, as ever, and something we always take a keen interest in. I did hear a report this morning that nationally, figures for Looked After Children and children with plans of protection and everything else has increased massively. And I think back to times when we were talking about 147 being a fairly steady figure for us. Those days have long gone sadly, and I think it's not, that's only the tip of the iceberg because as you mentioned, beneath that is all the children in school who have a protection plan, who are receiving early help, who we're doing all we can to prevent getting to that stage. So I think we've got to acknowledge all the work there. Linked in with that as well is the extra work that is put on the department, and it reflects the social worker element that was referred to before. Although we have good leads in social work, we know it's incredibly difficult to get people to join there. I don't know what the long-term solution is. I was also going to mention, but you preempted everything, because looking at councillor Massey's report as well, I noticed, you know, the overspend with the children's services, mostly because of the Looked After Children placements. It's been an ongoing thing, but it just seems that the situation is more dire, and the figures you were reading out, quite frankly, are a little bit scary. Finally, hopefully, on a more positive note, I don't know whether you'll have the figures yet, but there were so many people visiting the Thrift Festival, was that a fruitful recruitment area? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor G. Jeffrey, please.
Thank you, madam mayor. As always, your reports are absolutely superb, and they are gripping and very sad if not. Can I ask, obviously with the abuse that has been found in Tyneside and Rochdale and places like that, has the abuse always been there? We're actually finding, it's a rise just because we're actually finding it and looking at it more now? Or is it a general trend up over anyway? Thank you.
Sorry, councillor Lanigan, please.
Members have actually asked some of the things that I wanted to ask. What I wanted to know, councillor Hanaway, the adoption breakdown, have we got any figures for our area that? And I was actually listening to a news programme the other day about the increased number of children who were waiting to be adopted who hadn't been. I don't think it was Redcar and Cleveland area, I think it was much, it was further north. And I'm wondering whether we are finding it difficult for those children to be adopted. Your numbers that you've got are frightening. The children, the 50 children that we've got outside the borough, because I'm sure that that is a much more added cost than looking after them within the borough. Have we got any plans for, to bring those children within our boundaries? And if we're working alongside the Tees Valley to bring them into that, do we have any special arrangements for that so that Redcar and Cleveland aren't paying this extra money for these youngsters? Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you, councillor Lanigan. Councillor Kay.
Thank you, madam mayor. Yes. Councillor Hanaway, you were quoted, I think, is this a country that works for all children? Yeah, and my question is, is this at present a borough that works for all children? And if the answer is yes, it is a borough that works for all children, do you see this as sustainable into the future?
Councillor Higgins.
Thank you very much, madam mayor. I would just like to ask the cabinet member, I watched a programme the other night on Panorama, and it was about sexual abuse in schools, children to children, and it wasn't just secondary schools, it was primary schools. Do we deal with this, and have we got any figures? And I was quite shocked when I was listening to it, to see that the authorities couldn't do anything about it, the police couldn't do anything about it. So maybe this is an underlying tip of the iceberg as well, and have we got this problem in our borough in the schools? Are you aware of it? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Higgins. Let's sum up councillor Hanaway.
Thank you, madam mayor. So councillor Ovens, in terms of the budgetary pressure, so if the numbers continue to rise, then Barra, the director tells me that, you know, we will need another team of social workers. And you can imagine the cost of having that. So I was squibbling quickly, that was the main thing I think you asked about? Ah, right, yes, we did have, yes, of course, fostering stalls are unusual because having three or four customers would be disastrous for any other business. But for a fostering stall, it's really good. Yes, so, yes, there were some leads on the day. And of course, it's a very beginning of the process, there's a lot to go through from there. In terms of the training, obviously, some of it can be quite shocking because it has to deal with things like allegations against foster carers. So it's, then you're obviously going to get a lower number of people who continue after that. But yeah, they are definitely worth doing, and of course, we go in supermarkets and, you know, all over the place, jobs, fairs, to try, and we often get foster carers and former foster carers to actually man those for us to explain what it's like. So yeah, the recruitment effort is going well, and in normal circumstances, yes, it would be, it would be working to reduce demand. Councillor Jeffrey, okay, you asked about Rotherham, has it always been there? Of course, that's a- Of course, that's a very big question that involves, that all the historical investigations are about. Certainly, there are two, there are two very good reports on Rotherham that you should read, if you're interested in this subject, and it really showed how entrenched the situation was, that the first report was written, and of course, this is a government-commissioned report that is read everywhere, but it had very little effect, which is why they then had the Casey Report, which was a lot more hard-hitting. But still, I wouldn't say that the situation was over with, you know, and of course, it's, it can be, or has been quite a sensitive subject, in terms of, you know, racial issues and things like that. Over the country as a whole, most perpetrators aren't, you know, from Muslim backgrounds, but in those particular places, they are, and there are reasons for that, to do with the night-time economy, which is predominantly, you know, Asian men, and because, as I said earlier, vulnerable people tend to make their way to the night-time economy. So there are particular issues in those places. But I would definitely say the reports are quite hair-raising reading, really. Obviously, there've been a lot of convictions recently, there's also, there's been a lot of convictions in Newcastle recently, and I learnt about those a couple of years ago in the, when I went to find out about Operation Sanctuary. So it takes a long time for them to work through, which is why you get a lot of convictions at once. But that's worth learning about as well, because it really was an extraordinary operation that involved not just the police and local authority, but all sorts of agencies, including Trading Standards as well, in a joined-up effort to combat CSC. Councillor Lanigan. So I'm just trying to read my-
Hi councillor Hanaway, we're running out of time on this, so I know you had a lot of questions to answer, so.
Right. I'll write to you with an answer with that one then, councillor Lanigan. And very quickly, councillor Higgins, the answer to your question is yes, it does happen, and we are aware of it, but unfortunately, I'm not allowed to say any more than that in public, but I'd just like to assure you there that yes. Oh, councillor Kay, okay, shall I write to councillor Kay as well?
You've got time for a quick answer.
Sorry, I can't read my notes, what did you ask me about? Oh, are they sa, oh, right, okay, yes, okay, is this a borough that works for all children? Well, obviously, I'm assured that we have, you know, that we have a successful system here, and we have, you know, the right personnel, and that we keep children safe, and that we focus on their wellbeing. But as I said in my report, so much depends upon the national situation and how it affects us, so that's where there needs to be a new plan. That's what we need most of all, because as you can see, this is a situation that's happening across the whole country. So we do everything we can here, but we need more response from government.
Thank you, councillor Hanaway. Can we have a scott vote on accepting the report? All those in favour, sorry. Carrie, thank you. We have one report from portfolio holders, as you've probably seen, the agenda's quite heavy, so we'll set aside a period of ten minutes for questions afterwards, which is obviously, hopefully will be covered, but if not, we'll see how it goes.
Thank you, madam mayor. My report this year, as it has for the last two years I've been in this particular role, highlights the challenges we face as a council in order to achieve the flourishing future that we talked about earlier in our new corporate plan. These challenges are not only financial, they also link to services and the services we can continue to deliver. We are certainly not alone with these challenges, and local government nationally faces a very similar position. In Redcrumb Cleveland itself, due to coalition and conservative governments, we have cut sixty-nine million pounds from our budget since 2010. Shaping our future three, as you'll all be aware from the budget setting last year, sorry, earlier this year, forces us to cut a further twenty-five point six million pounds from our budget over the next three financial years. Due to the conservative government's continued attacks on local government and the public sector, a similar picture emerges across the country. The Local Government Association states there'll be a funding gap of seven point one billion pounds by 2020 for all local governments. This is between the suite of services local government currently offers and their likely costs by the end of the decade. Just to touch on a few of those particular issues, firstly, adult social care, the government a couple of years ago was pushed to the brink by the social care crisis, with mountain pressure forcing the then chancellor into action. However, no new money was provided to local councils, and instead, we and practically every other authority were forced to accept the adult social care levy of two percent on the council tax bill. Rather than provide government investment, the government chose to force local councils to pass this burden on to local residents. In the spring budget, this government did announce an improved better care fund, Redcrumb Cleveland gets three million this year, two million next year, and one million the year after that. However, this is a one-off fee, it's not something that we can put in our base budget, we have to use it for infrastructure, and there are tight conditions attached to that funding, such as improving the discharge times from hospitals to help the NHS. The council will spend this money on expanding our rehabilitation offer and for a new interme care offering in a central location. Thus, we're forced to continue to require the use of the adult social care levy to meet the growing demands of a day-to-day service. Using council tax as a way to raise money for adult social care ensures that the government's policy hits the hardest to the poorest in our society, as council tax is a very regressive system. This decision, alongside the cut of super tax from fifty to forty-five percent, means that the poorest ten percent of households now pay forty-five percent of their bills towards taxation, the richest ten percent of households pay only thirty-five percent of their income on taxation. Rather than passing this burden on to the local tax base, the Labour Party recently have stated that the shortfall in adult social care funding would be met by reversing the Conservatives' planned decision to cut corporation tax and would raise an extra two billion pounds. Labour's fully costed manifesto also committed the party to making council tax a fairer system. Indeed, this was a manifesto for the many and not the few. Just to touch on the budget very briefly, I reported to council the complete budget position at quarter one in September, however, an up-to-date position is provided in the report here on page forty-seven. In short, our challenges have not gone away due to the continuing austerity drive of central government. This budget was set with six point five million pounds of further cuts for this year, and the use of six point eight million pounds of reserves, and you can see how challenging that has been from the table I've just drawn your attention to. Simply, the budget is showing a balanced position in the resources directors and corporate allocations, a slight overspend in adults relating to the changes members requested to the library review, a small overspend in economic growth which we managed within that directorate, and a major overspend in children and families of two point four five million, as alluded to just there by councillor Hanaway. This two point four five million is directly linked to the demand of looked after children being at an all-time high, with our numbers increasing to two hundred and fifty-eight. In two thousand and ten, there were sixty-five thousand children in the country being looked after. In two thousand and seventeen, there were seventy-two thousand, and as you can see, our numbers have practically doubled over the same period. Again, it's not a problem unique to Redcar, and the Local Government Association have termed the children cares crisis, as it will be soon, as the biggest challenge facing local government nationally by 2020. So we have to move on to balancing the books, and the way that we're going to do that this year is four-fold. We are using one point one million pounds of pay savings achieved to date due to vacancies that have not yet been filled, and we're going to use that to offset the budget. Recruitment delays to these positions, we anticipate, will achieve a further four hundred thousand pounds of savings on staff costs until they're recruited to. That will go to offset the overspend, there's a use of a small risk reserve, and a six hundred thousand pounds saving from the corporate allocations budget linked to training and increased income. This still results in an overspend position despite all the efforts that we've gone to, and it'll be neatly managed throughout the financial year, and as councillor Hanaway has just said, in future years as well, because these are one-off solutions to a terminal problem. Just to move on to other items very quickly, the capital budget I've touched on in the report, we have a twenty-three million pounds capital budget for this year, but as you'll note, and anyone who's been at the scrutiny committees will know, that spend is quite slow at this point, with only around three million pounds of that out the door. This should be corrected by the fact that Mark Ladyman's team has recently had some new staff employed, which will help to achieve some of the projects that members are so passionate about. As you're aware, we committed five million pounds to our town centres initiatives, two million pounds to industrial estates, and one million pounds to the public realm, and we really want to see these projects get off the ground. We wouldn't have made that money available if it was not something we wanted to do. So as I say, economic growth, I'm very pleased to report, has recruited to some of the vacant positions, so hopefully we'll see some movement on some of those projects. Regarding sickness, audit and health and safety, there's little to report here, we've historically been one of the best, sorry, the best performing authority regarding sickness in the Tees Valley, and we've seen our sickness absence rate fall last year with the new data coming in April 2018. In audit, regarding external audit, we received an unqualified opinion in our statement of accounts and an unqualified value for money opinion, which are both good news. Internal audit presented their reports to the governance committee, which I won't go into in too much depth, but the resources report is attached in my report. There were two areas that had cause for concern, but these have both been dealt with, and there's an action plan in place. Accidents are at a low, with a one point seven one all accident frequency rate, however, as councillor Norton always reminds me, until that number is zero, we still have work to do. Forward planning, as councillor Jeffrey's mentioned, the boundary review has now come with its first conclusion, and members, community groups and the public are invited to submit reports by the fourth of December into the second stage, and I'm pleased that our nearly unanimous decision at a previous council meeting has been listened to by the boundary commission there. Finally, some dates for your diaries, because I know this was a concern last year, the cabinet budget meeting will take place on the first of March 2018, and cabinet will begin setting the budget in December this year, we'll come to you with some proposals. Invite questions.
Thank you, councillor Massey. councillor Lanigan, please.
Madam mayor, thank you councillor Massey for your report, it's quite substantial as it always is. Two things I want to ask you about. The extra money that came in from central government, the social care money, was that ring-fenced, or was that a decision taken by this councillor as to where that money was going to go to? And the second thing is, we've talked a lot about communities today within the council chamber, and I actually, and I've looked at your budget and I've looked at your figures, as I'm sure everybody in the council chamber has, and we've spoke about what's happening within councillor Hanaway's portfolio there, which is quite dreadful. But in order to generate wealth, we have to spend, and we have to get the economy right, and if we get the economy right, it will generate its own wealth, and we will all benefit from that. I have put forward a proposal for the Loftus Ward, having had your cabinet member down there to have a look, and we've been quite conservative in the efforts that we're trying to make there. I am well aware that this council put a million pounds in there, it is going to go nowhere because of the deprivation and the dereliction that we've got within that town. You're all aware that serious mining is coming in there, and need this town to be thriving, and then it will financially stand on its own two feet. So I have put together a proposal that I will be taking to Mr Sampson, and it will eventually come to cabinet, for you to consider for your budget, and I'm hoping that you will do that in order that the Loftus Ward can move forward. We did have the money from SSI when that went down, I had men from British Steel living within my area, unfortunately, we didn't get anything of the five million pounds, which would have been greatly helped. The million pounds that we have put in, that you did put in, councillor Davis and I have looked at that, we are going to help new businesses where we can, and existing businesses with part of that money, in order to generate what we're trying to do. But we are going to need a substantial amount of money into the Loftus area to help it thrive, so I'll be coming to see you, councillor Massey, so you can have a look at the plans to see if we can make some progress. Thank you, madam mayor.
councillor Massey.
To deal with councillor Lanigan's first point, the money that we receive from the government regarding the improved better care fund has kind of three conditions in which it must be spent on, it must meet adult social care needs, it must reduce pressures on the NHS, and it must ensure that the local social care market is supported. There are some further grant conditions as well, that councils have to work with the CCG, and the plan must be part of the better care fund narrative and spending plans submitted for assurance. In essence, the plans that we are putting in place, we hope, by having consolidated an intermediate care offer and an improved rehabilitation care offer, will allow us, in the future, to manage that service far better. We could use that money and plug a hole, but that wouldn't do us any good in five years' time, we're seeking to invest that money to get a better service, so that the costs of that service in five years' time are hopefully less, or at least the same as what they are now. On the second point, I'd be happy to meet with yourself alongside councillor Lawton to discuss future townscape initiatives. You've identified that we did make some money available after a number of years of a capital spending freeze because of our high debt level. It's important to note that generally, our capital programme until 2021 is a hundred and eighteen million pounds large, for want of a better term, but that includes the sale of large-scale assets, so I think it's around twenty-one million pounds of asset sales to make up that, and I think it includes twenty-three million pounds of borrowing. So yes, we can always do more, we can always invest, it's trying to get that balance between any more investment is going to mean more borrowing, and that's a decision that we as a cabinet and certainly as a council more broadly will have to make in the future, but again, happy to meet with yourself.
councillor Glynn Nightingale, please.
Thank you, madam mayor. I've just got three points I want to make with questions. First of all, a note from the report here, that something like eighty-five percent of the net revenue expenditure of this council is generated from within the borough, which is a major shift in the way in which local government, especially local government here, has been financed. So, and I can't really believe that a Labour moderate like councillor Massey really does believe that increasing corporation tax will be the solution to the problem, especially when we've got Brexit coming along and we have the need for even greater competitiveness internationally, rather than imposing further burdens on business and business competitiveness. So first question then is, is he doing anything to get the, to get the Local Government Association to put pressure on the government, either to restore the equalisation arrangements that used to occur across the country, which would have helped boroughs particular like ours? And secondly, whether he would back instead a local income tax, rather than, as he was implying, the inequalities of the council tax? That's the first issue. The second issue is relating to three two two, where he's talking about vacancies, could he actually quantify the vacancies that are there, that are accidental, rather than deliberate in order to save money? The third point I want to make, madam mayor, is that, perhaps I'll make a statement first of all, I think I said some time ago that it was long past the time where there should be an end to austerity, and I'm quite sure that councillor Massey would agree with me on that. And in particular, we have to maybe look forward to when we have Brexit, even further, a more intensive austerity imposed upon the public sector. So the question I've got to ask then is, does councillor Massey, by the way, I'm quite sympathetic to what he's trying to achieve in terms of the financing overall, in terms of the strategy, but does he not agree that it is now time for even greater emphasis on moving, looking at a more radical look at the priorities of this council, in order to ensure that we are doing what we should be doing and getting the basics right?
councillor Massey.
Councillor Nightingale is correct in his first point, which was regarding, I think it's around ninety million of our hundred and four million revenue budget that is raised effectively locally, with government grant dwindling by the year, you know, we've seen revenue support grants go from the mid-twenty millions to kind of less than fifteen million in the last two years, so that's the drive from central government. The elephant in the room, I guess, is business rate retention, and if and when that comes in from central government, they've asked for some pilot areas, but areas like ours and the areas in the Tees Valley are not keen to be part of a pilot due to the fact that we don't want to sign up until we know exactly what the rules are, because we know that we're susceptible to large-scale industry, and we don't want a situation where there's absolutely no safety net from central government and we bear all the risks. So on the face of it, business rate retention could be a great thing, because we'd get to keep the other fifty percent, but it's the fear about, A, the risk, and B, secondly, and perhaps more importantly, I guess, the fact that we're not sure what else government might give us to do. And until that becomes clear, I don't think we need to be signed up to that. And until that becomes clear, I don't think we need to be signed in up to that. Um, regarding the second point, there's, um, I sit on the, you might be aware of this, I sit on the local government association's resource board nationally. And there is a lot of pressure there and it is cross party pressure. It's not just Labour members, Liberal members, it's con- conservative members as well to try and come up with a solution around austerity. It's a real difficult thing to kind of sit in a room where people are, people are speaking there almost without their party roseettes on. They're speaking there because their councils are struggling. I know the LGA is doing a lot of work on that and the information I gave earlier around the shortfall, the seven billion shortfall in local government funding up to twenty twenty, that comes from the LGA and the LGA's submissions to government reflect that. And I think it's always been quite positive that the LGA has managed to agree that cross party and get that submitted. Sorry, I'm trying to distinguish between statements and questions. Um, the vacancy question, all the vacancies that we're talking about there are vacancies that we do seek to fill at some point. They're not kind of extraneous vacancies. The reason that we can kind of bank, in essence, the vacancy saving for six months is because we do want to recruit to that in the long term, well, in the short term even. And that's why that, if it's a one, it's a one point one million pound saving in six months. But for the next six months of the financial year, we're only thinking we're going to get an extra four hundred thousand of that. And the difference is obviously because we're going to employ people in the other posts. Um, the, the last point about austerity, I, I do agree in essence that we as a council need to look for absolutely everything, to try and find solutions to some problems, but a lot of these solutions lie nationally and at the moment we're not getting any answers that are satisfactory. I think one thing that we may have to do in future, as you've heard today, there's a two point six ish million pounds overspend across the council that's being projected, which we can manage for this year. But the problem that we're going to have is that the way we're managing it is a one year solution. We can't just use pay savings next year. So there might need to be, in essence, a, a shaping our future three year or something, for want of a better term. I hope it's termed more catchily than that. But fundamental decisions are going to have to be made to meet that shortfall in future years. And that could encompass some of what you're talking about.
Thank you. We're over the allocated time for this. We've got three more speakers, so if people can try and be as brief as possible, please. Councillor Ovan.
Thank you. Uh, one of the questions has already been, uh, uh, mentioned and that's the children's places, placements. And I would only say year on year, we try to put more money in. It's never enough and it's a headache I wouldn't want. So, um, it's a pressure, uh, uh, which is, uh, unknown. Um, the other one was about, again, vacancies. And I think I've raised this in the past as well. I always have concerns that vacancies are causing pressure and stress on other people in that department. So I'd like to get an idea of where those vacancies are mainly and if they're in key areas where it would constitute a risk to, um, sort of business continuity. Or is that taken into account when you leave those vacancies for the six months or whatever you referred to? Thank you, Madam Mayor.
That was nice and quick, councillor Ovan. Um, the first point around children's placements, I think that the way we need to kind of deal with this issue is pressure on central government. And I think that this to an, to an extent worked with adult social care. Adult social care was a major national issue. It was in crisis according to kind of any major body that you listen to. And the government responded, not necessarily the way that we'd have liked. They put the burden, as I said, on the local taxpayers. But the improved better care fund is, it's a welcome thing. I'd like that mil, that three million every year in perpetuity. But to get it once, we'll still try and do something good with it and we'll try and invest it to get a better service in five years' time, like I said. On vacancies, I'll try and get you some more specifics. I don't have them off the top of my head. But I think that the vast majority of these vacancies, as I've said to councillor Nightingale, are in roles that we do want to fill. We're not holding them back to balance the books. We want to fill those. It's just a coincidence that at six months we haven't filled quite a lot of them, but I'll try and get you some more detailed information.
Uh, councillor Philip Thompson, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I'll reduce my questions to two. Uh, one relates to the split between the adult social care precept and the council tax, uh, per revenue. We will shortly be looking at the budget for next year. So it'd be really helpful if we could have that split clear. And not only that, but the actual spend against the, uh, money that we've raised through the precept, uh, last year. That would be really helpful. I, I, I'm looking also on page fifty four about the other issues. So we are advised that our fees and charges will be coming back to scrutiny in October. Now, one key element in fees and charges where we have discretionary powers is, uh, the, the principle of car parking charges. We, we were promised a report borough wide on car parking policy two years ago. I haven't seen it. Uh, if, if it exists, please can I have a copy? If it doesn't exist, can we expedite it so that it is in place before we start talking about fees and charges? Thank you.
Um, regarding the, the, the first question, the answer is yes, we'll, we'll get you that information. I think the important thing to realise is that we spend every penny of that precept that we get in because our adult social care needs are growing and have been growing every year. But we'll try and get you the exact breakdown as to where it goes. Uh, the second question, I think, sits out with me and I think now it's councillor Norton, if I'm correct, councillor Brown. Um, but we'll, I'll have a chat with my colleagues and we'll see where that's got to because it's not something that I've ever been briefed on. But thank you.
Councillor Ian Jeffrey.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Um, my, my question's about, uh, PFI payments. Uh, but, uh, but by way of preface, um, I'm sure members will have seen the press release that featured in the local press regarding my local primary school, South Bank Primary School, which has just, uh, gone back to a newly built school because Corrillian managed to make a lash of it, lash of it of it the first time round. They were in the temporarily relocated premises for three years. And there was a statement in the, uh, press from the, um, Corrillian, uh, operations manager who said he was so pleased to see them back in the new school that had kindly built for us. He foregoes to mention the fact that it had taken more than three years to convince them it was their responsibility to build it in the first, first place. But, uh, that, that's an aside. As far as Ta- South Bank Primary School is concerned, incidentally, I'm sure you'll all know this, it's in the top five percent nationally, not locally, nationally for the way it performs. And incidentally, of course, we all know, don't we, that all our primary schools are performing well as opposed to our secondaries, which are performing less well. And it struck me when I was, uh, making notes to, uh, for my comments that, um, most of our primaries are not academies, whereas most of our secondaries are academies. Uh, must be a moral there somewhere, I guess. But during the time that the school was temporarily relocated, it had to continue paying its PFI payments. I would argue, and I have argued, and I'm going to start again, I think, to get those payments refunded back to us because of the disgraceful way that the construct, contractor actually behaved. My question to you councillor Massey is would you regard that as a legitimate position to adopt? Would you support us and, uh, would you do what you can to facilitate the return of that money, which is rightfully the schools?
Uh, thank you for the question councillor Jeffrey. It's important to highlight that we as a council paid the full unitary charge for the Teesville building, as you've identified there, because there was an agreement put in place that that school, Teesville Primary School as it was, served as temporary accommodation for the students of South Bank Primary School during the period. So that was signed as a agreement between the two parties. The, we pay around two point seven million pounds per annum in PFI fees and this is recharged to the schools, of which South Bank pays the council two hundred and eighty thousand pounds back. In the period that we're talking about, Corrillian did have to pay the council rent for the use of the Teesville site. This amounted to around seventy thousand pounds over the course of the year. They also spent half a million pounds on doing up that school because it hadn't been occupied for a while. And one advantage of this is the fact that the council gets to keep the school, now Corrillian have handed it back in its new improved form. The unitary charge also covers, so the PFI charge in simple terms, also covers the contracts that schools have such as maintenance and running the kitchens in the schools. These services obviously were still provided at the new school at Teesville in the year that they were there. This is, in a, in essence, this was a commercial deal with Corrillian, the PFI provider. But the council have managed to make sure that neither the council nor the school were in out of, were out of pocket. But I appreciate fully that this did leave the pupils and parents at that school with a great deal of turmoil and upheaval in this period. I think in the terms of the contract, the contract has been agreed with the council and the PFI provider. And it's a really unfortunate set of circumstances. It should never have happened, but it did happen and alternative arrangements were found for those students. I don't necessarily agree with everything that went on there and I understand your concerns entirely, but we think that that agreement has gone place. If you want to try and put pressure on that ex, you know, external to this meeting, then I'd be happy to kind of join you with that. But I think that from the council's perspective, there's very little we can do. But as an elected member's perspective, there's possibly pressure to try and guilt those companies into actually doing the right thing for the, the residents and pupils of South Bank.
Thank you for your part councillor Massey. Uh, we've got three marshines and two questions. Internal optimist, think we're going to get through it all in the next hour. So over to councillor Ian Jeffrey for the first motion.
Thank you, Chair. Um, this motion is about, um, Orgreave, which is a small place in the south of Yorkshire. But it's specifically about the events of eighteenth of June nineteen eighty four, uh, at the British Steel Corporation. Yes, we had a British Steel then, British Steel Corporation coking plant. And, uh, the con- confrontation that ensued between picketing miners and the police. And it struck me when I was, uh, writing down some notes around this, you'd have to be nearly fifty, um, to either be around or remember what happened on that day. Uh, but with one or two honourable exceptions, I guess all of us in this room probably fall into that category. So that's not been such a big deal in itself. But this is a, this is a story of, um, political corruption and police dishonesty. And yet a, yet again, a little scandal under a Tory government. And following the election of Margaret Thatcher and her government in nineteen seventy nine, one of their first priorities was to smash the British trade union movement. And their initial target was the strongest of these unions, the National Union of Mine Workers. All the evidence since, and including from the police themselves, demonstrates this was the political strategy that the government adopted. And the miners' response by striking was in defence of their jobs and to protect their families and communities. For me, an overriding memory, uh, from that time was members, actually members of the public queuing up in Middlesbrough Bus Station to fill the buckets with cash that someone was holding during that period of time. Public support for the miners at that time was huge. It was, it was really enormous. And even, uh, the Conservative Club in South Bank managed to find a jar of jam to donate to the relief fund. And, and our constituency Labour Party was really honoured and pleased to be twinned with Easington Colliery at this particular time. My eldest son was then a young Metropolitan Police Officer. And he told me of police wearing jumpers inscribed with the acronym A S P O M, which stood for Arthur Scargill Pays Our Mortgages, which was used to taunt the miners on picket lines. The events of that day in nineteen eighty four are well documented. A pre-planned orchestrated horseback charge on unprotected and defenceless miners. The subsequent trials established miners were assaulted by police, wrongfully arrested and charged, and subjected to a year-long dishonest prosecution before all charges were eventually, eventually dropped. Some ninety four miners were involved in those trials. And also established at the trial was the dishonest testimony organised by South Yorkshire Police. The same force was again involved in wrongful testimony five years later in nineteen eighty nine, following the Hillsborough Football Tragedy. And as we know, and as we speak, the first criminal prosecutions against serving and non-serving police officers are now underway, twenty eight years later. Before the two thousand and fifteen general election, the then Home Secretary, current Prime Minister, strongly indicated to families and campaigners that a public inquiry into the Orgreave events would be set up. But after the general election and after cursory consideration by Home Secretary Amber Rudd, that was rejected, much to the dismay and rightful anger of campaigners. A future Labour government is committed to a public inquiry. And this motion is part of a wider national campaign and I'm presen, I'm proud to present it. I would say in addition, if you're keen to know more about Orgre, Orgreave, just Google it and you'll find all the film, the photographs and the written testimony to support what I've been saying. And if you get the opportunity and you've not already, already taken it, go and see Billy Elliot, the play. Because that exemplifies the spirit of the miners and the inherent nastiness of the Tory party. I move.
Now, your councillor Jeffrey, do you have a second, uh?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Uh, and in doing, in doing so, um, I'd like to supplement, uh, what councillor Ian Jeffrey has put forward. Uh, Madam Mayor, there is ample evidence to support a public inquiry. And councillor Jeffrey there has put forward some views, but briefly. A well-known historian has described the confrontation as a medieval in its choreography at various stages. A siege, a battle, a chase, a rout, and finally a brutal example of legisla, legislized state violence. Civil liberties, pressure groups, Liberty has said this was a riot, but it was a police riot. It was reported that the police wanted to teach the miners a lesson, a big lesson, sure, they wouldn't come out in force again. The court trials collapsed when the evidence given by the police was deemed unreliable. The solicitor for some of the men said that the charge of riot had been used to make a public example of people as a device to assist in breaking the strike. Call it the worst example of mass frame-up in this country this century. In June ninety one, South Yorkshire Police paid out four hundred and twenty five thousand pound compensation to thirty nine miners for assault, wrongful arrest, unlawful detention and malicious prosecution. In two thousand and fifteen, the independent police complaints, commission reported there was evidence of excessive violence by the police officers. A false narrator from, from police exaggerating violence, ma, violences by miners, perjury by officers, given evidence to prosecute the arrested men and an apparent cover-up of that perjury by senior officers. Alan Billings, the South Yorkshire Police and Crime Commissioner, admitted that the place had been dangerously close to being used as an instrument of disdise. In September of this year, last year, sorry, a retired detective superintendent with Greater Manchester, who was being sergeant at Orgreave, had told the South Yorkshire, pre-arranged a system whereby officers who made arrests would not, contrary to established police procedure, be responsible for their prisoners and write out statements dealing, detailing the arrest. But instead hand over the prisoners to a reception point, return to the picket line and at the operation, at the end of the operation, simply sign statements would be pre-prepared by other officers not involved in the arrest. He said this had never, he had never accounted, encountered before or since. And he goes on to say, I know in my mind that was wrong and I can clearly remember saying to colleagues, that was with what I was doing today. I will not be making arrests on that operation. I didn't. Another officer said he would, he and colleagues had been instructed by senior officers not to write anything in their pocketbooks. A practice controversially repeated by South Yorkshire Police at Hillsborough in nineteen eighty nine. It was a disciplinary offence not to write in, uh, pocketbooks, which was considered, considered contemptuous. Not very difficult to attend without being obvious and therefore persuasive credible evidence in court. In October two thousand and sixteen, a former Merseyside police officer who was present at Orgreave told the British BBC journalist at a briefing before the confrontation, senior South Yorkshire police officers were anticipating trouble and in some ways relishing it and looking forward to it, Madam Chair.
It's coming towards the end councillor A.
Uh, so I think you've got the drift, members, Madam Mayor, of what the, the motion's about. It's been a big cover-up and I support and secondly the motion. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Turner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It was nineteen eighty-four. I was twelve. Several members in this chamber weren't even born. We had the halfpenny piece and the pound nut, both discontinued last year. Tove and Dane won a winter Olympic gold. Neil Kinnock was ahead in every single poll that year. Look where that got him. Right? Nissan agreed to build a factory in Sunderland that we now all say for granted and think it's been there forever. Thomas the Tank Engine made his first appearance on British television, and it was the last year of the British Football Home Championships. So there's some of the nicer things that happened in nineteen eighty-four. But there was a number of other things that happened in nineteen eighty-four. Twenty-two people in South Yorkshire died from food poisoning in hospital. Four children and their teacher tragically died when a lorry ran them off the road in the school minibus. Sinn Fein's Gerry Adams, his supporters and sympathizers, carried out a bombing terrorist attack in this country, the likes of which we've never really seen since, right? They tried to assassinate the Prime Minister and her cabinet, and five people tragically lost their lives in that year. But the most shocking event of all for me in nineteen eighty-four was the fact that taxi driver David Wilkie was murdered by two South Wales miners for the tragic, for the travesty of trying to take a miner to work. And he was murdered by those two miners. So I want to know from the members over there that will undoubtedly vote for this, why you're not asking for a public inquiry? Why you're not demanding a public inquiry into those things? The truth of the matter is on that, is you won't, because your party has been gradually taken over by a hard-left agenda that seeks to drag away anything and everything, right? That you can in order to have a pop at any Tory government. The other thing about that miners' strike that many people won't know is back in eighty-four, by today's standards, it was illegal. Arthur Scargill and the union bosses refused, refused to ballot its members and let them have a vote on the strike. I've sat in this chamber and watched the proposer of this motion demand that union members should be given ballots on whether they should strike or not. Right? But now he chooses to conveniently forget that. Now, Orgreave was a terrible, terrible day, right? I agree with that. There was fault on both sides. Anybody that says there, there wasn't, has been naive. But to be fair, the police, right, in the subsequent thirty years, policing has changed beyond all recognition. Right? It is not the same police force as it was back then. Right? I genuinely believe there would be nothing learned by today's modern police force, right? From reopening any inquiry into that, and quite frankly, to group it in the same conversation as the Hillsborough disaster when people tragically lost their lives. Nobody lost their lives at Orgreave. Nobody was subsequently charged. There was no miscarriage of justice, right? So to compare the two is quite frankly disgusting. What I also want to know is why, if we don't think the police force has changed, shortly after that event, back in the mid-eighties, right, the police changed as part of the Police and Criminal Evidence Act. Some of the things that went on, and I don't doubt some of the things that went on, would not be able to happen today. So therefore, this Home Secretary and every single Home Secretary since nineteen eighty-four has deemed that public inquiry is unnecessary.
Can you wind up please councillor Turner?
In thirteen years of a Labour government, nobody wanted an inquiry. This council, led by councillor Walsh, under a Labour government, didn't want an inquiry. But today, thirty-three years after the event, your momentum handlers want you to push for one, right? And you diligently dance to their tune, right? Some of your group weren't even born at the time of the event, and most were too young to remember what went on. Yet they'll all vote through today what you asked them to, because they're scared to stand up, see this motion for what it is. It's frivolous posturing on your behalf. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Turner. Councillor Clark, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I'm assuming this is an instruction from Labour's central office from Jeremy. You know, I, I've done my research as well, and my understanding is that the strike was illegal. There was never a national ballot taken, and that's why there was such a split, a divisive split by the miners. So the Labour motion wants the Home Secretary to review a decision about so-called widespread public concern about policing at Orgreave specifically on the eighteenth of June nineteen eighty-four. This is an incident which took place thirty-three years ago. The Home Secretary's decision not to go ahead with a review was taken nearly a year ago. So why have you been delaying your motion? There are two accounts of what happened on that day, there's the miners and the police. And who can you trust after all of these years? Nobody was killed. And official reports say that during the confrontation, ninety-three arrests were made. Fifty-one pickets and seventy-two policemen were injured. I don't know what you're trying to gain with this motion, because if it's an inquiry into the South Yorkshire Police, there were many, many other police forces involved in this strike, so you can't pinpoint it down to one police force. Tactics has already been said by the police have changed radically over these years. No, what you're trying to do is politicise this incident, which has no bearing, as far as I'm concerned, in our area, and nothing will be gained by such an inquiry. You'd be better off asking instead the Home Secretary to have a public inquiry into why there has been a dramatic reduction in police resources in our borough and countrywide, and what she will do to reverse this trend. Being an increase in antisocial behaviour, we've had residents in here today about it as well, complaining about the level of antisocial behaviour. It isn't acceptable. What you want to do, you want to concentrate on today's problems rather than yesterday's. I would be supporting this motion. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Clark. Councillor Care, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I did support, I was around at that time, by the way. I did support the miners at the time. And, and I believe that there were, looking back at it, back at it in retrospect, there were legalities and a certain amount of violence perpetrated by both sides. Now, you might argue, well, the miners were in such an invidious position that one or two of them would step beyond the law. But the, the, the way I, the main point I want to make here is that, as, as has been said, thirty-three years has passed. It seems to be fashionable nowadays to keep raking these things up, you know, if there's a, something you don't like or something more serious, or a tragedy, inquiry after inquiry after inquiry. And most of the, a lot of these people will be dead, I would think by now. It, it becomes pointless after a time. And I, you know, I can't help supporting this Home Secretary and any of the earlier ones who've said, well, the recent earlier ones who've said, you know, enough is enough. Some, you know, like the German nation, they can be still inquiring about the Holocaust, you know, it's, you've got to put these things behind you and move forward. And the other matter is the cost. These inquiries cost millions to run, and they're, they're often very inconclusive. So I don't think anything would be achieved. I think too much time has gone by. A lot of the people are dead. Other people will have, uh, uh, I'm, I'm trying to avoid the, the use of the word warped. Their, their memories won't be very certain about what actually happened af- after all this time. Um, so on balance, although I, by the way, I do believe that Margaret Thatcher, I think she was, if she wasn't legal, she was unconstitutional, illegal, she, she did unconstitutional things. In particular, intercepting miners and supporters who were on the way to support the strikers. I do feel that the, the government did definitely overstep the mark on that. And certainly, charging with using horses, et cetera, was, was wrong. But it was thirty-three years ago, and I don't think anything can be achieved by dragging it all up again for whatever reason. And, and I would apply, there should be a statute of limitations on these things, and I would apply that to other, um, incidents, regrettable incidents which have happened in the past as well.
Councillor Care, councillor Tisdale.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not going to go into the, the history, the politics, witch hunt. I am interested in justice, that if a public inquiry needs to be held and sufficient evidence, and I don't see any reason why not. But it's got to be a fair one, not just, not just against a particular body. My, my concern is that I was of the opinion, and certainly some of my colleagues were of the opinion, that any motions coming to this council should be relevant to the work of the council, pertinent to the conduct of business which this council operates. I can't see that supporting this motion has any direct relevance to the work of this council, either directly or indirectly. And therefore, I question whether we should be actually considering this motion at all. I can understand the emotions, I can understand there's other ways of doing it. Public petitions to Parliament, for example, might do it. I just question the, whether this motion should come to this chamber when it doesn't directly affect the work of this council, the work we are doing and the service to our residents.
Just to clarify councillor Tisdale, the guidance in the law we refer to makes it clear that we shouldn't reject motions just because they're on the face of it outside the council powers. And just to quote this really, there are some topics of general interest to local citizens on behalf of whom the council may deem itself to be the proper representative body to express opinion. So from the point of rejecting the motion, it didn't appear that would be appropriate when the motion came in. But obviously, members have the chance to vote accordingly in the chamber.
Councillor Lanigan.
It wasn't a legal strike. We were involved in it. There was no ballot of any of those miners to bring them out. And what actually happened, along with Orgreave and the other pits, they sent in buses of pickets to stop the men going into work. And yes, there was violence on those picket lines, because I witnessed those myself. And what happened, their communities were divided, and some families had to go into work. And they were spat at, and they were kicked by the other miners that were out. And they brought them from all over the country into Yorkshire to stop the miners who wanted to go to work of going into work. And there was violence from the police, and we are all aware of that. Why you've brought this, I don't know. It was a long time ago, and the Labour government at that time in opposition sat on that fence and didn't help us. They wouldn't come to help us. There was no, I was involved in that, we know, because I'd been in touch with our Labour MPs, and they did nothing to help us. Fourteen months we were out, with no money and two kiddies. So I know all about what happened over the miners' strike, and I haven't forgotten that you divided communities, and by bringing this, you're going to do it again. But Scargill didn't suffer through this. Scargill got his wages while our lot were, were trying, we were running around trying to get food to support the communities that we were in. He got his wages. He ended up with a great big flat down in London through the N U M that we never got. So don't tell me about what happened there. I know exactly what happened and how we suffered in that, and the communities suffered. And there wasn't one Labour MP that we contacted that would come and help us. And Margaret Thatcher, whatever she did, wrongly, in my opinion, and I agree with what you're saying, what's going on there, but there's two sides to this, and that was absolutely appalling what went on there. And it's affected the communities and affected people like me and my kiddies and my family. So I won't be supporting this, because I think what you're going to do is, the communities that were split there, and some of those families now still don't talk to each other over this, because the hatred runs deep of those flying pickets going in to try and stop their men from working, and they had to work. This wasn't about the union, it was an illegal strike. And if Scargill had got his act together and gone to the ballot and asked the miners to come out, I'm quite sure they would have done. And that's what caused the division with this. And this is what this was all about, because the majority of the miners couldn't afford to come out. And the upshot of what we've got is we haven't got any pits left. That's what happened through politics and people not listening to each other and not caring about the communities.
Thank you councillor Lanigan. Councillor Massey, please.
I do think that the motion is a point of order.
It's not a point of order.
It's a procedural motion I would like to move. I can move it at any time, Madam Mayor.
Oh, um, yeah, I think you're due to speak next councillor Thompson, so, um, is it, yeah? So after councillor Massey, is that okay?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yep, thank you. We're on. I think people are getting the knickers in a twist over something here, which doesn't necessarily need them to be, you know, twisted over. This is about showing support for members of the public, it's about showing support for miners. It's not about necessarily apportioning blame, it's about trying to find out what actually happened on that day. Like, the vast majority of us were not there. As councillor Turner has said, I wasn't even born then, many people weren't. But that doesn't mean I can't do my research, and I've got a track record of doing research at quite a high level, so I think I can make my own conclusions about this. I think the question that's been asked is what's changed, why now, et cetera, has been raised by a few people. In two thousand and fifteen, the Independent Police Complaints Commission said that there was a mass withholding of evidence about improper treatment of miners, perjury by police officers, and also perverting the course of justice as the absolute extreme there. If that's not something that doesn't need to be investigated, I don't know what is. Even as late as December two thousand and fifteen, Theresa May was in favour of a public inquiry. What's changed? The political test here, it's, it's not, it's not about, the political part of this isn't bringing this motion. The political decision was not to have an inquiry by the then Home Secretary, now Prime Minister in the first place. Whatever your view on Orgreave, what is there hide about having a public inquiry? That's what I don't quite understand. Whether you're on the other side of this or not, why not have the inquiry and find out exactly what happened? Open up all the documents, all the evidence, and then let an independent person, an independent inquiry come to a conclusion. I support the motion.
Councillor Thompson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whilst they have been legitimate, according to the monitoring officer, to have this motion tabled on the agenda today, I think the evidence, listening as I have to the speakers who preceded me, we have not achieved any unity in this chamber. In fact, the motion has proved to be divisive. There are other forms in which a legitimate request can be made for a public inquiry. One of these is the House of Commons. So it would seem absolutely appropriate for members on the other side of the chamber to be lobbying their members of parliament to ask for this to be brought to be lobbying their members of Parliament to ask for this to be brought up. And for the arguments that they are putting forward should be discussed appropriately in that chamber. So we've already spent some thirty minutes, I believe, talking about a motion that members that are here say is not relevant to the business of our council. So I'm going to ask, uh, Madam Mayor, if we can consider proceeding to next business before we spend any further time on this move.
That seconded.
Yes.
Thank you, seconded by councillor Griffiths. For councillor Jeffrey, you get the chance to speak on, on, on councillor Thompson's proposal.
I haven't indicated I want to speak on councillor Thompson's proposal. Are you inviting me to speak?
You, you get the chance to if you wish to.
Well, sho- surely if, if it's not, surely if he's moved next business, that goes to an immediate vote, doesn't it? Uh, I, what, what I, what I, what I would say, what I would say, um, that, tha- that's a denial of the democratic process. I would vote against any procedural motion that attempts to, uh, uh, take us away from any debate about an issue, however controversial it might be. Philip Thompson said, he's complaining that we don't have a unanimity of view. Well, that's what, that's not what we're about. Uh, uh, we sit, we seem in recent times to have built a reputation as a council and agreeing practically everything that comes to the council. And that's, and that's fine, that's fine. And that's, and that's fine where it's appropriate. No, it's not a point of order, Philip, sit down.
My point of order?
It's, well, it's not down to me to clarify. I, my understanding of the standard orders of this council is if a procedural motion is moved like next business, we immediately go to the vote. It's a denial of democracy. I think we should throw it out, however much some of you might dislike the subject we're discussing.
Is there a point of order?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, there is a protocol, it should be followed.
Okay, so we... Thank you.
Um, just to clarify what the, the constitution says, um, it says if a motion to proceed to next business is seconded and the chair thinks the item has been sufficiently discussed, he or she will give the mover of the original motion a right of reply and then put the procedural motion to the vote. So there's a right of reply to councillor Jeffrey.
Councillor Jeffrey.
Am I right of replying now?
Maybe confused. So we are now going, voting as to if we can, uh, move to the next motion. All those in favour of moving on to the next motion, please show. All those against? Um, I believe now we continue with the debate on councillor Jeffrey's original motion with councillor Walsh.
Thanks. I'll, I'll, I just want to pick up on two points were made during the debate, Chair. The first is, uh, I think it was Steve Turner who mentioned that for some reason he'd heard, or he'd been in this chamber, and he'd heard me as a leader of a Labour group in this chamber opposing a similar motion. And I've just got to disabuse him of two things. Sorry, in...
Yeah, I said councillor Walsh.
Well, perhaps you could wait till you hear what I say.
I said councillor Walsh was leader of this council under a Labour government, and we didn't have a call for an inquiry.
Might be worthwhile just, you know, ac- actually hearing what I have to say. The first is that, um, if it was in that period of the strike, this council didn't exist, it was Langbar District Council. I wasn't a member of it, couldn't have been. The second occasion was, on the four years I was leader, I do not recall this issue ever coming at all before this committee. If councillor, coun- if, if, if anybody can find a minute to the contrary, I'd be welcome to see it, but I certainly cannot remember it. Secondly, um, another member in conversa- in debate said that no Labour MP in this area was happy to support the miners. Well, I can't speak for Jim Tin, who's no longer with us, who was a Redcar MP. But I need to point out, in the East Cleveland area, it was a Tory MP, um, Richard, yes, I know, and you said Labour, Richard Holt, who was a very red-blooded Tory, and certainly would have wanted to have Arthur Scargill's head on a pike outside his house if he could have had half a chance. But the main point I do want to make, Chair, is a very simple one. People say, what's it got to do with us? Well, I could argue that what happened after, happened during and after the miners' strike has everything to do with this council and our other colleague councils in North East. Because since the mid nineteen eighties, we have had to be dealing with the impact of industrial dereliction, of deindustrialisation, of massive job losses in very traditional industries, which in other parts of Europe, in other parts of the world, are flourishing and are working very, very well indeed. We have a, we had a government at that time which ideologically opposed to effectively organised trade unionism in heavy industries, and was prepared to see those industries killed if it meant killing trade unionism. Since nineteen eighty-five, we have been dealing in and out, day in, day out, with the impacts of deindustrialisation, the impacts of long joblessness, joblessness, and the impacts on those generations of people who've lived through that. So I'd argue that the actual defeat of the miners in that strike is probably one of the most salient im- impacts on this council of any other issue in that decade, Chair, and that alone is reason for us to debate it.
Councillor Norton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I just really wanted to explain to the more astute across the chamber who might note that I didn't vote on councillor Thompson's motion and won't be voting on this motion, because I was, uh, responsible for certain elements in relation to the miners' strike of nineteen eighty-four and beyond around the United Kingdom. So I wouldn't want that misunderstood when I don't vote in the motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Um, that's a, oh, councillor Jeffrey, just sum up, please, on the original motion.
Well, for me, uh, I mean, my, David Walsh has articulated, um, uh, a lot of the relevance argue, argument. I mean, for me, it's, uh, it, it, it's, it's confidence, it's about confidence, it's about accountability, and it's about, uh, combating injustice. And I seem to recall the backdrop to the Tory Party Conference was just that, justice of all, justice for all. Uh, coming from, uh, I've got to say, from the current Prime Minister, I found pretty ironic, but certainly that's the, the mantra she was talking about. I mean, councillor Turner's, uh, talk about, um, uh, the sh- the shape of pa- pound coins and the rest of the stuff, that's just a total distraction. Um, uh, governments and the police are there to, uh, police buy consent and, and uphold the rule of law, which as we all subscribe to. There seems to be no disagreement that the police didn't in some way, uh, acted in a way that was inappropriate. And that's one good reason why we should be talking about these things. And I will say from my own experience, uh, I've been involved with the police since I was a councillor over that period of time as it, as it happens. And yes, the police have changed. There was a time when the police wouldn't talk to ordinary individuals, let alone par- let alone form partnerships with public or other bodies, that has changed. And they've been forced to change. And quite rightly as well, because elected representatives like me and you have forced that change along with others, and that we brought it about, and that's been a good thing. But as far as I'm concerned, there's still, there's still, there's still some, some, some way to go. I think one or two people have made comments about Arthur Scargill and taking a ballot and all the rest of it. Um, Arthur Scargill actually had a mandate to take industrial action. He to, he chose to take, uh, that form of industrial action in the way that, in the way that he did. You can debate that as long as you like. He had a particular position about defending, um, the, the, the miners themselves. And you know, if you want to talk, if you want to talk about, if you want to talk about democracy, um, the biggest decision this country's taken in recent times was to leave the European Union. Physically speaking, only a third of the population actually voted for that position. Two thirds of the people of this country did not vote for that position. So almost de facto, we shouldn't be doing what we're doing if we adhere to a strict democratic interpretation of how we should behave ourselves. Councillr, ca- councillor Clark, again, another destructive argument was introduced. Um, the lapse of time should be no consequence, as far as I'm concerned. Tell the people of Liverpool the lapse of time since nineteen eighty-five has got noth- has got nothing to do with exploring what happened and bringing justice to them. Ca- 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 councillor Teasdale, a little more moderated in his tone. Yes, of course, if there's a public inquiry, it should be even-handed, it should bring all the facts to bear, and we should get to an honest interpretation of actually what happened and who was responsible, and bring people to account if that's the case. And yes, these things do cost us some, a lo- a lot of money sometimes, but again, what is the price of democracy? What is the price of accountability? And what is the price of ensuring that people, uh, have access to justice? Uh, Mary Ranigan's, um, little rant, uh, this, this motion, this motion, Mary, this... Yeah, you're not a miner, though. This is about, this is about, this is about the eighteenth of June nineteen eighty-four. It's not about all the counter accusations and other experiences that you and people m- might have had. All I would say to you, councillor Lanigan, is remember who orchestrated this and on whose, and on whose, and on whose behalf. There are mining communities, ex-mining communities up and down the country, as pointed out by David Walsh, that are, that are still devastated by that attack on their living and on their families. And I made the point about councillor Thompson wanting us all to be warm and cuddly together, which is nice sometimes, but you can't always achieve it. So I suggest, please, you support the motion. And incidentally, there are people in this room will tell you I have no connection whatsoever with what somebody called momentum over there.
Thank you, councillor Jeffrey. Um, all those in favour of supporting councillor Jeffrey's motion, please raise your hands. All those against? All those against? Thank you. Motion carried, sorry. Uh, we've got twenty minutes, um, so I can't see us getting through everything, but we'll move on to motion two. Um, councillor Sue Jeffrey.
Yeah, thank, thank, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Um, I too want to, um, talk about the past, um, seven years into the past, seven years since we've been able to give our councils and school workers, um, the pay rise that they deserve. And for me, that is far too long. In June this year, our three trade, the three N J C trade unions submitted a joint pay aim for the majority of council and school workers, which included a five percent increase on all pay points. All of you will know that there's been a one percent public sector pay cap in place for the last seven years. Is that too far in the past to talk about as well? I think not for the people who've had to suffer from it. Here in Redcar and Cleveland, there's been real effect on our staff. And, you know, do you want to stay and hear the figures? The fact is, a refuse loader on a C grade is earning seventeen thousand one hundred and sixty-nine pounds a, a year. If their salary had been increased in line with living costs, that would be nineteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-five pounds. That's nearly three thousand pounds they've lost over that period. Social workers, we've talked about social workers on many, many occasions and the important jobs they do for this council. One of our social workers on a G plus grade is earning thirty-three thousand four hundred and thirty-seven pounds a year. If they'd got the living, cost of living increases that they deserve, they'd be being paid thirty-eight thousand eight hundred and four. That's another nearly six thousand pounds loss. Can anybody in this council chamber have, imagine having to deal with cuts like that? So for each of seven years now, public sector workers have not had a pay rise. And each of those years, they've either got no increase at all or saw their pay rise, rise by just one percent. And even that one percent pay increase wasn't a pay rise because of inflation. And we all know that inflation is on the move. Just in terms of the difference that inflation is making nationally, just in case you haven't noticed when you've gone to the shops, but I certainly have, between two thousand and ten and two thousand and sixteen, the cost of rent went up by seventeen percent, electricity by twenty-eight percent, sending child, children to a nursery, twenty-one percent. And the cost of a holiday, if you want a holiday, if you're in a position to take a holiday, went up by twenty-seven percent. The fact is that inflation has eroded wages and the lack of pay increases have eroded them even further, to the extent that people have lost the amount of cash that might otherwise they could have spent on really important things in their lives, a deposit on a house, um, a car, money towards sending their children to university, things that make a difference to people's quality of life. So public sector workers' pay has been falling in value year on year. Money's been getting tighter and tighter for the people who run our public services, and there's an ever more difficult environment within which they have to work, a difficult environment that's been caused by Tory cuts. So finally then, during the general election campaign, and it was during the general election campaign, finally, the government was embarrassed into facing up to the facts. And they were embarrassed by a nurse, a nurse who asked a question of the Prime Minister. And she asked a very simple question. She said, when am I going to get a pay rise? And if you're a nurse and you've been a nurse and working in the circumstances that our public sector workers have to work in, and, you know, they have to wait to ask the Prime Minister for a pay rise seven years on. And it was only in the middle of last month that, following the pressure, that this government finally announced that it would allow above one percent pay rises for police and prison officers. And then also said that there would be a wider commitment to flexibility for all public sector workers. And just Tuesday this week, Health Minister Jeremy Hunt told MPs that the seven-year run of one percent rises or pay freezes wasn't sustainable in the NHS. Great news, you would say, wouldn't you? Isn't that brilliant? Police are going to get a pay rise, fire are going to get a pay rise, our NHS nurses are going to get a pay rise. But the sting in the tail of both of those announcements was that they have to be funded from existing resources. What does that mean? That means more service cuts. And if you just think about the police, what have we been saying all day? You know, cuts to police service are impacting on our communities. That is the choice that this government has given to police forces. And I know, having spoken to the chief constable, um, and I think also at the, the police crime panel, um, just recently, um, it was made absolutely clear that police officers in, um, this, um, in the Tees Valley have actually been contacting the police, our con- police chief constable and saying, I don't want to take this pay rise because I know the impact that it will have on the services that I'm trying to provide. And that's the reality of the circumstances that we find ourselves in. So that brings me to the second part of the motion. Funding for the pay rise must come from central government. We face unparalleled financial challenges as a result of austerity. Christopher's talked about them today, you know, a hundred million pounds taken out of our budget, over a thousand staff lost. And we're dealing with all the additional responsibilities that we have as an organisation. Older people, children, public health, you've heard it all today. So we've got those extra responsibilities, we've got austerity, we need this, a, a pay rise for our staff, but we need that pay rise to be funded. Now, there will be those who say that government cannot afford a pay increase. Well, they can. The Institute of Fiscal Studies has estimated the cost of, um, a pay, public sector pay rise that was the same as the private sector as being six point three billion. Sounds an awful lot, but by comparison, existing unplanned cuts in corporation tax will cost sixteen point five billion. So the money is there, it's just about the will to make the right choice, to put it in the right place to support the people that need it. And finally, you know, even if you don't listen to all that, even if you don't accept all that, why would you not support that group of people who make up one of the largest parts of our local economy? Good public sector pay rates generate tax revenues, they reduce the call on revenue, on welfare, they put money into our local economy, and they create jobs. The bottom line to this is why on earth wouldn't you do it? The arguments are absolutely clear. I hope everybody in this council chamber can support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Jeffrey. Do you have a second, uh? Councillor Massey.
Motion and speak now, Madam Mayor. Uh, I'll be brief because councillor Jeffrey's covered an awful lot of this. Um, you'll have seen our unison colleagues out there today, and they're handing out badges and leaflets which state quite clearly that for years, workers like our council staff workers, but workers across the public sector, have borne the brunt of austerity, while this country went through a financial crisis indeed... While this country went through a financial crisis, indeed, the world went through a financial crisis, the people who have borne the brunt of it are our staff, they are public sector staff, who, as Sue has said, they've had a real term wage fall of around fourteen percent in the same time, the cost of living has gone up twenty-two percent. These figures are catastrophic, and they shouldn't be allowed to continue. Councillor Jeffrey has mentioned quite clearly as well, this can't be a situation like we have with the police, prison officers and the fire services, where all great will break the pay cap, says the Prime Minister, but find the money yourself, because that only hits services. We've heard that our budget has a two and a half million pound challenge for this year. This money needs to come from central government. Central government has the money. If you have the money for a deal in Northern Ireland, and you have the money to give millionaires tax cuts, you have the money to pay our staff a fair wage. I support and second the motion.
Thank you. Councillor Clark, please.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Just very quickly, I class myself as being level-headed and all about balancing the budgets, but at the end of the day, where I told councillor Ian Jeffrey to stick it, I'm sorry, Mrs Mayor, but your austerity, stick that as well.
Councillor Lanigan.
I will be supporting this, because I think it's extremely important to do that, and it's about our staff. I was quite surprised that they actually gave the nurses an extra pay rise, they definitely need it. I was one of those, some, some years ago now, short-staffed, working twelve-hour shifts, seven days a week, when we couldn't get the staff in there. Perhaps this will help with recruitment. I doubt it, they haven't given them enough. But I will definitely be supporting councillor Jeffrey's motion. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Ian Jeffrey.
Yeah, I just wanted to briefly confirm what councillor Sue Jeffrey about the police. The chief constable, and I know this is a member of the police and crime panel, the chief constable has confirmed that he has received letters from serving police officers in Cleveland and Stabbury, that we would not be accepting the rise if it meant colleagues going down the road. And can I say, in the same, in the same discussion, it emerged that metropolitan police officers, some metropolitan police officers, have actually got the eligibility for referral to food banks. That's the state of police.
Councillor Air, please.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. It doesn't need me there to tell the chamber the effects of authority in local authorities. And the, in doing so, it's the employees, it's the local, it's not my teeth out, it's the public, it's the public sector and their employees that are paying there for austerity. See, the private sector, all intent and purpose, is not affected, not affected and feared, I says. We've all heard the, the captains of, of the private sector industries, and the senior management teams, et cetera, the massive pay rises there that they've had, and the massive tax cuts that they've had over the years. It's often said, you know, and I've heard it there for many, many years, that to keep the private industry, and other sectors, and the public sector at one time, to keep their captains of industries and the senior management, we need to pay them more to try and get more productivity out of them. Well, the other side of the coin is, to pay the blue-collar workers, and you're not wearing a blue collar, to keep them on board, to get more productivity out of them, that's what's been done over the last seven years that we know of, to keep those at the lower end of the, of the scale. Does that mean then that you've got to freeze their wages? Does it mean then that they've got to take wage cuts? I don't think so. Like I've always said to many in this chamber, I've always, I've heard me say it before, all the brains ain't on one side of the table. It's about time that this government recognised that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor, councillor Turner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't actually disagree with the, with the principle of councillor Jeffrey's motion. I agree to a point with councillor, I think the time for austerity to come to an end is certainly there. And we've got to look at that and be sensible about it. What, what I really disagree with is the rhetoric behind it. Councillor Massey says that it's public sector workers that have borne the brunt of this. I say, it's not. You walk into any supermarket in any town in the country, and you talk to whoever's sat on the checkout, and they will tell you, they've felt the brunt of it as much as any council worker, as much as any public sector worker. To think that there's masses pay rises in the private sector, it's burying your head in the sand, right? So whilst I agree with the motion in principle, you've got to stop talking it up as if it's only public sector workers that are affected, it's not. We've all been affected. Anybody that works in the private sector has had their wages cut as well, right? It's not... But they're not getting them, councillor. The point is, we're talking about the workers. I'll sit there with my blue shirt as well as yours, councillor Air, and talk about blue-collar workers, and I will tell you that they have borne the brunt of it as well, right? And my final point is, for yourself, Madam Mayor, for Mr Newton, I think we can save some money for the next meeting and not send out the agenda, because pretty much everything coming through it is coming from Labour HQ, right? These motions have appeared on other councils across the North East in exactly the same format, so we might as well just get Jeremy Corbyn to write it for us, get him to send it out, and save ourselves some money on paper. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Turner. So can we go to the vote, please? Oh, sorry, oh, sorry, councillor Sue Jeffrey to sum up.
... at all, because it's just so, well, it, it, it just undermines the consensual approach that we were taking as a, as a council in relation to this really important area. But I do want to say, first and foremost, I make no apologies for being part of a campaign across this country to get public sector workers decent wages. And I think that's absolutely what we should be doing. And as it happens, councillor Turner, this resolution comes from three trade unions. It doesn't come from the Labour Party. And I would have thought, you know, as, given that those trade unions are the trade unions that we recognise, that it is absolutely appropriate that we should accept...
This, this, this motion is identical to the motion put forward at Stockton Borough Council two nights.
And I am certain that Stockton, and I am certain that Stockton Borough Council also talk to their trade unions. Perhaps you might learn something if you did the same. So this resolution, motion, comes from the trade unions. And it comes from the trade unions because the trade unions are doing what they should be doing, and that is fighting for their workers, and we are supporting them in that fight. In relation to private sector pay, I accept entirely that those people at the bottom do not get paid well. It is a structural weakness in our economy caused by austerity and this Tory government that has led multiple low-paid jobs to become the only option available to huge numbers of people, particularly in the North East and in the Teas Valley and Redcar in Cleveland. And the lack of wages, and the poor productivity, and the blight on families that arises because of that, is something that every Conservative in this council chamber should be ashamed of. The second, the second thing that I would just want to say in relation to this particular resolution, I do appreciate the support that I've had from across the chamber. I'm absolutely certain that our unison and other union colleagues will appreciate that support as well. We all now need to put pressure on this government to not only lift the pay cap, but to provide the funding necessary to ensure that we can make that pay rise impact as soon as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All those in favour of councillor Jeffrey's motion, please show. Carried, thank you. As the meeting is about to exceed three hours in length, can I remind members that the meeting will automatically adjourn at five PM unless council decides to set aside standing order number nine? Does anyone wish to propose that the meeting continues after five o'clock, and if so, for how long, we should continue? Thank you, is that seconded? Half, half an hour. Second that. And all those in favour? Yeah, we'll have to count. Councillor Massey, he's like... Okay, I think I've just got time, well, obviously, we're not going to get a chance to do the, the motion. So I would like, I would like to go on to appoint members, if that's all right? We've literally got time to scrape that through. So changes to committee, councillor Mrs Forster to replace councillor Quarterman on the Adults and Communities Scrutiny and Improvement Committee, councillor Goddard to replace councillor Bendelaw on the Personal and General Purposes Committee, and that councillors Ian Jeffrey and Dowson be nominated to the seats on the Joint Health Scrutiny Committee, one vacant seat to be filled by the Conservatives. Also, the appointment of members to the Joint Health Committee review of the NHS Commission's learning disability complex needs and our autism respite care services. Is that agreed? Sorry, councillor Mason.
I need to make two further changes, please, Madam Mayor, which is for councillor Dowson to replace councillor Glynn Nightingale on the Adults and Communities Scrutiny and Improvement Committee, and for councillor Glynn Nightingale to replace councillor Chris Jones on the Economic Growth Scrutiny and Improvement Committee.
Thank you. That doesn't need a second, does it? And a name for the Conservatives?
That would be councillor Philip Thompson, that are...
Thank you councillor Thompson. Is everyone agreed? Agreed, thank you. That concludes the business today. Thank you for attending.